Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Counselors, please sign in. Yes, we do.
Very good. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest to declare? Counselor Bowman.
I, Ryan Bowman of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of paragraph five, report number fifteen dash one four four, motion number six. And I quote that council approved changes to the funding previously approved in Water Capital, et cetera, end quote. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a pecuniary interest with this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to give that to the clerk? Is there anybody else that has a disclosure of pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we have no delegations tonight, and so we will move right to... Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Hutchinson?
Have you got it? I can use the old one. Did you get my email? It's off, and do I have to declare it now?
Clerk tells me it's taken care of.
Very good. So we'll move to departmental presentations. We have a lot of presentations on our agenda tonight. So obviously, I am asking the presenters to be as concise as possible, understanding at the same time that there's important information that they want to convey, but just to allow time for questions. That would be great. So with that, we will move first to community services and Commissioner Hurdle.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and members of the public. I'm pleased to present to you the draft 2015 operational capital budget for community services. I will try to be as concise and brief as possible. There is a lot of information, so bear with me. First of all, as you can see, the proposed increase for community services is about 1.3% for 2015. And I will go through the details in terms of each department through this presentation. Our capital budget is proposed to be around 10.4 million this year, and with the majority of those funds being in recreation and housing and social services. So for planning, building, and licensing, a few things I want to mention in terms of assumptions or what's included in the operational budget. We are looking at an increase of about 0.8%, and we have increased our fees at 3% within the budget. So one of the things we did do is we have adjusted some of our fees to reflect past trends. So, for example, we didn't notice that we were getting a higher volume of zoning applications and site plan applications, so we have adjusted our fees to reflect that volume. Same thing on the licensing side, where we have noticed an increase in terms of the plumbing licensing and electrician. So we have adjusted that. One of the significant change, obviously, is in the building services, where we have a decrease of about $1 million, which is reflected in the permit that we had budgeted for in 2014 for the construction of the new hospital. So we know, obviously, that's now happening in 2015. So you do see that change in the building services. We do also have a transfer from the BRAG reserve, which is the building services reserve. And the way that, basically, that reserve fund works is we look at our total costs or anticipated for building services and our total revenues anticipated. And if there are any gaps between the revenues and the operational costs, we would draw from that BRAG reserve. So this year, we are proposing a transfer from the BRAG reserve. Last year, we actually were anticipating a profit, and we were transferring money into the BRAG reserve. We are also seeing a reduction in terms of the grants to others, and in that reduction is the Kingston Humane Society is included. And if you look at your budget under programs, you will see also animal control has a reduction. So those two are actually connected, and that's as a result of some of the changes in terms of the retention period for cats. It has gone down from five to three days, so that's why there's a reduction noted. We are anticipating an increase in the equipment and allocation area, and that's due to the increased space that we will be occupying within the John Counter Boulevard building after renovations are completed. Renovations are scheduled to be completed in September of 2015. And just to give you a little bit of background on this, as one of the recommendations of the mayor's task force on development was to actually do some renovations to improve the client service or customer service experience at John Counter. That was included in previous budgets, and we are now moving ahead with those renovations. There's also an increase in the crossing guard funding, and that's as a result of a gap analysis that we did. We actually identified a couple of areas where we needed to increase our coverage. Those areas are the Sir John A. McDonald School in Berryfield and at the corner of Berryfield and Johnson Street. So, of course, we want to make sure that we can ensure children's safety at all times. In our capital budget, you'll notice that compared to previous years, it's fairly small. We do have funding in the capital budget for a secondary plan for the area of Sinum and 401. So that's around the area of the recent Homestead Purdies Mill development. And that's included, that particular area is included in our urban growth boundary area, and that was presented to council when we reviewed the urban growth boundary and talked about areas of potential future residential growth. So it is included in there, so we do need to do a secondary plan. And we also have some funding for vehicle and equipment and building services. We still have close to $4 million in our work in progress in that particular department, so we still have a lot of work to do, and that's why this year we don't have a whole lot of funding in our capital budget. Housing and social services is showing a decrease, actually, of close to 0.5%. And I will start by saying that I'm sure you've noticed a lot of variances in this particular budget, a little bit all over the place by program or other area. And the reason for that is because of the additional provincial funding that we've received this year compared to last year. So that's why we're seeing a number of variances. So this additional provincial funding, one includes the Ontario Works Upload. So Ontario Works is continuing to upload some of these costs, and our last year of upload will be 2018. So in 2019, we will obviously see more of an impact in terms of our funding in social services. As you know, we've also received additional funding for homelessness program. We have the CHIPI report that came to council in December for the allocation of those funds. We've received additional investment in affordable housing in 2015, and also some additional childcare funding. So without going through necessarily line by line, I want to talk a little bit about the supplies, materials, and rents in contracted services, where if you look at the budget, it's showing a reduction. And I want to make sure it's clear that it's not that we're reducing the service. What's happening is the municipal contribution is reducing because the provincial funding is increasing. So if you maintain, obviously, the service at the same level and the same funding, and you get more money from the province, then the municipality doesn't have to pay as much. We also did set up a reserve fund last year for Kingston-Frontenac renovate, and we set it up because we had some money from the province. We didn't know for how long, so we wanted to set some money aside that we could carry over so that we could continue this program. So what you see in terms of the transfer from reserve, some of the money is coming from that reserve that was set aside to be able to continue that Kingston-Frontenac renovate program. And we will be continuing to fund that program through the investment in affordable housing funding that we will be getting over the next few years. We have also a transfer in terms of reserve fund to finance a gathering place, which also came to council. We know that this is only at this point for one year, but as we indicated to council that we would be working with partners to find a more sustainable means of funding in the future. We have a transfer to reserve fund, and I want to talk a little bit about this, and it's, I understand with all of the provincial reallocation, it can become a little bit confusing. We've had our own internal challenges. But what we did with the CHIPI funding is we received funding from the provincial fiscal year of 2014 to 2015, because they have a different, obviously, fiscal year than we do. They will be giving us additional money in 2015 to 2016. So what we've tried to do is we've tried to capture some of the additional funding that we will be receiving from the province in 2015. We have made some assumptions in terms of some of those numbers. We've been conservative. We've reduced them because we do not necessarily anticipate that the funding will be at 1.1 million like it was in 2014 and 15, but we have still accounted for some of those revenues, and that's why they're showing as a transfer into the reserve fund. Once we have the confirmation, we will be reporting back to council with the details and also some recommendations for future investment of those funds. And one point in terms of the funding to the non-for-profit housing agencies, their funding level for their operational budget is actually set by provincial benchmarks. So we do not get to set their funding level, or we don't say you get inflation. The benchmarks are provided by the province, and we have to budget accordingly. I will say that this tends to result typically in a surplus at the end of the year, and the municipality will usually get 50% of that surplus. So if you look at the actuals of 2014, for example, and you see there's a surplus in housing and social services, a significant portion of that is actually the surplus that were accumulated by the non-for-profit housing agencies. In the capital budget, we have two items. We have 1.8 million for two programs, which are the capital investment in affordable housing and the land acquisition. Those two programs usually are budgeted at 1 million each, but this year it's at about 1.8, and I've rounded out the numbers. And the reason for that is because we had a pre-commitment to a project in 2014, which was the Kingston-Frontenac Housing Corporation project on Cliff Crescent. So that funding has already been allocated to this program. The next one, the 1.4 million for the Rideau Heights Phase One, actually, I had a slide with, I didn't make it. I apologize. I was hoping to incorporate a slide which would show you actually what the Rideau Heights Phase One looked like. Unfortunately, it didn't make the presentation, but basically, what the 1.4 million is going to be used for a few things. One is for the demolition of 80 Daly Street, which was approved by council again in 2014 as part of the plan. It will also be used to upgrade the road that was going through the park, which initially was going to be a road just for the park, but now we're going to upgrade it to a municipal road. And we're also going to be using some of these funds to support the implementation of services that will enable future residential development as well. And that future residential development will pay back the cost of servicing, but the initial work, because we are building the road, it makes sense to do it at this time and not to actually come back later and dig out the road and put in services. Recreation and leisure services, we are actually seeing a pretty significant increase in this department. That's a combination of a couple of things. One is a reduction in our revenues in a few areas. We did have, we did keep all of our fees at 3% this year. I know in the past, we have, we've actually increased, I believe, the Marina fees at 5% in the past few years. We didn't do that this year because one of our areas where we've lost a lot of revenues was the Marinas this year, and that was significant at Portsmouth Olympic Harbor. And that was a reduction in the rental of boats, seasonal boat slips, as well as winter storage. And council members that were here in 2014 will recall that the federal government made some changes around the Kingston-Penn area and fenced a certain area of the site, which brought about some limitations on the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor site in terms of storage and also some challenges with some of the boat slips. So we recognize that that may have had an impact in terms of our revenue, which was down by about $80,000 this year. At Confederation Basin, we were down by a couple of thousand dollars only, so the impact wasn't significant there. Overall, the Marinas are still generating a profit, but it's becoming very minimal with the impact that we've seen on Portsmouth Olympic Harbor. In the budget, you're also seeing an increase in the community partner's event, and we have included this year the Victoria Day event, which started last year, and it was through a direction of council, and it was funded through the Working Fund Reserve. And the direction was to actually continue this event, so we have now included it in the budget. We have also the full complement of the supervisor of special events salary. In 2014, there was only a portion of that salary. This position was established through the Special Events Policy Program that came through council in 2014 in order to create a more one-stop shop, if you wish, for special events for the corporation. We also have a reduction in provincial subsidies, and that was due to a one-time grant from the province for the Sports for Life program. And that program is obviously ending, and we're also not experiencing the expenditures that are going with this program. On the capital budget, we have about $6 million for recreation and leisure, and about, I believe it's about 3.8 million of that is for parks. And in the parks, we are planning to do work on the K&amp;P Trail, so from Dalton to Division Street portion. We are also planning to do works in existing parks, including Victoria Park, so we are anticipating some major work in Victoria Park. Poplar Grove Park, Lawrence Park, Splash Pad at Molly McGlynn Park, and Park it on Weller Avenue, which was actually a partnership with the Kingston Community Health Center when they built their new location on Weller Avenue. It's a partnership we created at that time. We are going to initiate a park signage program, and that will continue over a few years. So we have some funding budgeted over a few years for that particular program. We are also including budget for construction of a new park. It's the Westbrook Meadows Park. And we have funding, of course, included in the budget for ongoing asset management in arenas, marinas, aquatic facilities, and golf course. Long-term care, we are expecting an increase a little bit above the inflation. And with long-term care, a few things I'd like to mention is that we are anticipating a decrease in provincial subsidies, and that's primarily based on our case mix index. And last year, we had budgeted our case mix index at 96.06%, and this year, we are budgeting at 95.24%. And basically, the funding that we're getting from the province is based on two things, the case mix index as well as the Purdium funding. And the case mix index is determined based on the level of care and documentation that is put together by the home and then provided to the ministry. So we have been working on improvements and how we can improve on our documentation to make sure that we can try to maximize as much as possible our funding from the province in terms of our case mix index. We also have a transfer from Working Fund Reserve showing in this particular budget, and that's to support a second ADOC. And ADOC is Assistant Director of Care. And to give you an idea, we currently have over 100 nursing staff that were supervised by one ADOC. So this funding is temporary, and we are going to be working on ways to make it more permanent and included in the budget. And if you look at future years for Rideau Crest, we have actually included that additional Assistant Director of Care in the budget. And some of the ways that we're able to do that is, my last bullet on this particular slide there in the operational budget, is we've been working significantly on decreasing some of our expenses in medical and nursing related to sick time, absent days, and overtime. And in 2014, for example, we have reduced the sick time days from 16 to 12 days at Rideau Crest. So there's been a lot of work, and that translates, obviously, into savings. And we are doing a few additional things this year to try to get those numbers down even more. One is new schedules that have been issued to create more consistency for part-time staff, because we recognize a lot of our part-time staff actually have employment elsewhere. So we're trying to create more consistency so that it's easier for those staff to plan and to be able to come in to work when they're scheduled to work. We also have introduced a policy in December of 2014 around absent days to try to get a better control in terms of the absent days and, again, reduce those numbers. We have an increase in contracted services, two areas, our Brink Contract and also Point Click Care, which is our system that we implemented a few years ago in the home, and that's to capture data on care and so on and to be able to produce report. This system used to be managed through Extended Care, with whom we have, obviously, a contract for management, and we decided to bring it in-house because we want to be able to have a little bit more flexibility with it in terms of not just the data, but the type of reporting that we could produce. So with that, obviously, there's a licensing fee that comes with it. We also have a reduction in materials and supplies, and that includes a reduction in our labor costs, and that's based on labor relations costs. That's based on past trends that we've looked at, so we've been able to achieve some reductions there. And also Meals on Wheels supplies, because what we did find is that our budget was over the actual usage in the past, so we have adjusted that to make sure that we reflect the true usage. And in the capital budget, of course, we have ongoing maintenance, asset management at Rideau Crest, things like replacing heat pumps and roof repairs, equipment, mattresses, those kinds of things that we need to do on an ongoing basis. And briefly, in the commissioner's office, we have a slight reduction proposed. Couple of things I wanted to mention is, one, we do have a temporary position included in the commissioner's office to help with the coordination of the move at John Counter Boulevard that's taking place. It does include a number of departments. That position is fully funded by planning and building fees, so does not have any impact on the tax base. And in the capital budget, of course, we have $150,000 for the immigration strategy, which we did talk a little bit about yesterday, so that's included in the commissioner's office budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any questions? Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I have a few questions. One is on, I guess, just looking for a bit of clarification on building inspection and property standards. So currently, there's no increase projected for building inspection. However, there is one for property standards. I guess I'm mostly curious about what is taking place, whether it's sort of a complaint-based property standards budget line, or whether there is an element of that that is based on more proactive inspections. Since there isn't anything in building inspection, I'm just curious about that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there are a couple of things with, obviously, with the change in the department and property standards used to be with building services and now with bylaw. So there are a few things to mention, and one is that we have included a pilot project from a bylaw perspective in 2015 to provide more support to the downtown. And that actually is funded through the Working Fund Reserve and came to council in the fall, I believe. And so that's included in the budget. The other thing is we were able to rework some of our budgets and be able to have a temporary support for property standards. There's been a lot of work done on the gateways, and we want to continue to be able to do that, at least for this year. So that would be part of the property standards budget that you're looking at.
And I do have a question on childcare fee subsidies. There's quite a, well, there's a bit of an increase here. I'm wondering about whether or not there is, whether this has anything to do with, whether, I guess, we are working on the supply side of childcare in that there will be impacts from Bill 10 provincially, which is limiting the number of children that a private home daycare operator can take in in their care. So is this increase just simply, is there anything happening currently in parallel with provincial, changes to provincial legislation that will impact the number of spots available in Kingston?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe that in terms of the subsidies for childcare, that's referring more to the subsidies that the individual children are receiving to access childcare. So in terms of the supply, we are increasing the supply available to the number of children that can access the subsidy, but in terms of the supply, in terms of the number of daycare spots, that's not reflected in that subsidy.
Okay, thank you. And then just one final question on looking at community centers in the budget line here. This, I know that the Rideau Heights Community Center is projected to be under construction within the year. Is that included in this line, or is that a separate project, the Rideau Heights Revitalization?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Rideau Heights Community Center was approved previously in, I can't remember if it was 2013 or 14 budget, but it's already been approved. It's actually in our works in progress budget, so we already have the money there. The line that you see in the capital budget for a community center would be the community center in the east, in Kingston East, which council gave us a direction to look into potential location, and that we also included in our development charges fees when we did the review this past year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Meriship. The, I've got a number of questions. The first one is to do with the Marina, and you were talking about Portsmouth Harbor. I was just wondering if you could elaborate on that, because I think you said we lost $80,000, and it's connected somehow to KP closing, and I don't see what the connection is.
Through you.
And there may be more to it, too. I'd just like to know, since it's a lost revenue we had.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can get it started, and maybe Luke will want to add to that. You might recall, I believe it was in the, maybe, spring of last year, in 2014, the federal government announced at that time that it was going to put a fence around the Kingston-Penn site. And that fence actually came into the area where the city had been traditionally using the site for the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor Marina. So we had been using it for storage primarily, but also access, and we had to, as a result of that fence going up and closing off the site, we had to move some of the boat slips, which was not, obviously, we had customers that were very unhappy about that because of the arrangement. We actually brought a report to council at that time to advise council that there would be a cost of about $200,000 related to moving one of the dock or creating a new dock space to be able to accommodate or shift slips around. And we did indicate to the federal government, and I believe to council, that we had concerns, obviously, with the potential perception and impact. Obviously, the federal government were closing off their site to do more testing in terms of their grounds and so on, and the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor being right next to it, we were definitely concerned about the public perception. So the lack of, the reduction of space on the site and, of course, the lack of storage area has definitely impacted the consumer or the clients there.
Thank you. Now, in the five-year updated official plan, I just wondered, are there going to be... Now, in the five-year updated official plan, I just wondered, are there going to be, I mean, I know there'll be updates, but will be the opportunity to change the official plan be afforded to council?
So the five-year, through you, Mr. Mayor. The five-year update to the official plan is a project that is going to, actually is getting started now. We retained a consultant, and that report came to council, I believe, at the last council meeting. And yes, there will be reports that will be coming to committee and council throughout the process to give you updates. But in, at the end of the day, what we will want to, obviously, be able to do is to bring forward updates to the official plan. So yes, amendments and changes to the official plan that may, may address some of the past concerns, or if we have change in directions in terms of our official plan, they should be captured in there at the time. Keep in mind that that process will take over probably about a year, a little bit over a year. And we are going to be doing the zoning consolidation at the same time, within the same project. The zoning consolidation will take a little bit more time. That's going to take probably two years because we need to set, obviously, the policies first before we can get into the detail of zoning.
So when will the policies be coming forward? And when would be the best time to communicate changes that you would like to see?
So there will be a number of consultation and meetings, and we can definitely invite members of council that would be interested in providing feedback on the current official plan and things that they would like to see possibly changed or amended. We can definitely do that so that we get that done early, sooner than later, and we can look at how that can be incorporated in the draft.
And it seems to indicate that the central accommodation review would be coming forward again. And do you have an idea when that would be? I know we've got a couple of reports, but...
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, yes, it will be coming back. The reports that you received were information reports, and they were providing you information on what some other municipalities are doing, or how they're approaching it, or some of the policy issues. But what we will be coming back with will be a recommendation report in terms of how we should be addressing that and including that, probably including changes eventually in our zoning bylaws, to really try to address the concerns and issues with the student housing, specifically around Queens and, and St. Lawrence. As far as timeframe, I'm going to say probably in, more in the late 2015 that that's going to be coming forward.
Now, when the mayor's task force involvement comes back, I'm assuming, and we talked about this, but I want to be sure, that there'll be some kind of internet, up-to-date public access to development plans on, is that, that has been part of it. I just want to be sure that that's going to be part of it. So that's public access will be there from the word go, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. So currently, that project has been underway for quite a while. We refer to it as the Acela Project, or the Land Management System. So Acela is actually the, the name of the, the technology that the city has entered into license with, with respect to the land management system. So our team has been actively working on building the background protocols that will structure the whole IT system to facilitate the online submission of applications, and then also the digital approval of applications through, through our staffing process. So for the external user, it'll be a completely streamlined system that will be accessed via the internet. And then for our staff as well, we'll be getting rid of the manual processes that have typically been a, a part of the development approval review system, and it will all be automated online.
Thanks. I think that's good news. I see the mayor nodding vigorously over there, and probably Counselor George, too, since they were on that committee. The, just passing on to page 27, the Housing and Social Services, the Social Assistance Management System. Now, you just have to read the Toronto papers and know what a mess this has been and how much it's cost. And I realize we have been, sort of headed and forced upon us. But I also know that, you know, staff have been suffering through the process, the process, still are, a lot of stress and strain. So I'm wondering if the province is offering any money to help facilitate, to municipalities, because we're not alone, this is province-wide. So is the province offering any money to facilitate getting this system running properly? And is it the right system, even?
Mr. Layman.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, as of a couple of weeks ago, the province did make available a lump sum of money, which they provided to all 47 service managers. The city of Kingston received $60,000 of that funding. It was meant in the, in the, certainly in the press release that went along with it to cover costs that were unforeseen and the implementation of that system. But at this time, I would not be able to assure council that that will cover the, the costs that we're foreseeing by implementing this system. We're still trying to assess what the total costs are in terms of overtime, various other things, including lost productivity, which is the most important one. But we're still assessing that, as are the other service managers across Ontario, to see what the total costs are going to be.
So I presume we'll be pressing them on that issue, along with every other service manager? Well, that's something. I just think it's really had a poor effect on the, the people, the recipients as well. And then people, well, some people have got a lot of money, and some people didn't get any, and all kinds of variations in between. The, I just have a couple more. The, have we vouched for this, have we had somebody vouch for this Montessori model of care that we're bringing in for dementia at Rito Crest? I mean, I know what Montessori is for children. You know, it's a physical five-sense model with a step-by-step, and I could spell it out, I guess. But how does that affect people, seniors with dementia? Since this is a point of great importance to a large number of Kingstonians.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Deb Skeyf. I'm the administrator at Rito Crest. We all know that we're getting a, a totally different resident, type of resident in long-term care. As you said, you read in the paper many times that we, there's a lot of aggression, aggressive residents who are coming into long-term care. And we have trialed the Montessori method and different methods to help decrease dementia or to decrease aggression, and it's very effective. We have a responsive behavior team in the home that is very successful in identifying potential aggressive behaviors, and we feel that this would be, help bring quality of life to our residents.
So is it the step-by-step addressing of the issue that's the Montessori part of it?
It's a whole program. It's the approach to residents to help decrease aggressive episodes. It's the environment. It's a whole program, and it has been proven to be very effective.
Thank you. So we feel confident that it's going to work. Okay. I just want to say the thank you for the, to staff for all the programs they deliver, and especially, well, not especially, but tonight, particularly to the Recreation and Leisure Services and the capital budget, all these parks that are being developed and enhanced in the, across the city. If you read the names, I've got a few in my district myself, not a few, yeah, three. That's a few. And these are, some of them are more city parks than others, and, but it's good to see that we're doing that. And that wouldn't be possible, I don't think, I don't think this was really going on when I was first elected to council. But with the development of the master plan for Parks and Recreation, now it seems to have a proper life of its own, and people address issues and they come up and they're actually addressed. You don't have to poke and prod and, you know, everybody all way along. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, your psychic again. That, that was the slide I was first going to refer to. Planning, building, and licensing. I know on planning, we've had a lot of recent public meetings and recent planning, zoning requests and such coming forward. Do these numbers, when do these numbers get plugged in? The reason I ask is I know, for instance, a major development like University and Princess, the university suites. I don't believe they've gone through their final site plan or whatever, so they aren't necessarily building permit-ready. But would we be capturing those kind of substantial dollars that will be coming in through, through the, this process? Or are these numbers only reflecting what is building permit-ready? Am I making sense? I don't always. Does that seem sensible?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If I understand the question, the question is, is about the building permit revenues and how we actually went about establishing them, if they're established based on what is currently ready to be built, or if it's looking at what we might be anticipating.
You said it far better than me. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. What we've done is, we, we kind of follow planning, so when they come into pre-consult, we start to take those, those numbers that we, we anticipate the value of construction to be, and we list those, and we base our budget on what we anticipate coming through. So those projects would be included in that if we expected them to go in 2015. We have to be careful doing that, though, because there's no guarantee that those projects will, will, will actually take place, nor is there a guarantee that council will approve them. But what we do is we take the information we have in the pre-consult meeting, and then as it starts to progress through the system, it becomes more and more apparent that that's going to be part of our budget for the year. So that's how we try to budget. It's a difficult thing to do, but we, we do our best to try and anticipate what's coming up. So I hope that's basically what you had.
Yes, that adds lots of clarity. Thank you. I know, now, kind of putting on your Parks and Rec hat for a minute, I know that there are a number of opportunities coming up, perhaps with divestment of schools that'll be closed or whatever. Could, if those opportunities aren't in the current budget but could be funded out of parkland reserve funds, or if they qualified out of development funds within that area, will, will we be able to go ahead with those opportunities, even though those numbers aren't reflected in this budget?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there are two funds, actually, that we can draw upon in terms of acquisition of parkland or natural lands. So we have the Cash Inshore of Parkland Fund, and we also have a reserve fund that was created probably, I, I'm going to say, maybe five, six years ago, around the potential acquisition of parkland and natural land. So obviously, because we don't necessarily know what acquisition we may or may not do, and we wouldn't necessarily want to put that in our budget, not having any discussions or negotiations, what we would do is we would bring a report to council if there were any potential acquisition. We would bring a report to council in closed session, because that's usually how we deal with land acquisition. And we would provide a proposed source of funding, which would most likely be coming from those two, those two reserve funds.
Thank you. And this is a question, I believe, for you, although the CAO may want to wade in on this one. Under your capital budget summary, Recreation and Leisure, pathways and trails is just under half a million, waterfront development just over half a million. We're coming up to a strategic planning session. Also, we have the ongoing waterfront master plan. If recommendations came out of either of those events that would ask that extra priority be given to those two budget lines, how would we go about, or how would the city go about achieving those recommendations?
Say, Johann.
Through you, Your Worship. So, you know, that, that is, in fact, a purpose of the strategic priority setting session is to gain an appreciation from councils to where the priorities do lie. We would then factor that in and bring you back a report in terms of how to make that, including whether or not we would pull forward any, any other proposed spending from future years and ask for direction at that point in time. So what is in the budgets currently are within the capacity of staff and make normal, or is, is a normal next step for us to advance on these things, whether they be design or, or implementation? It does take time to get these things in place, but it certainly doesn't preclude having that discussion and the priorities set then that will inform us for the budget going forward and into the future.
So there would be a little bit of room to tweak the capital budget or to reallocate within the capital budget to achieve some of those strategic initiatives?
Yes, and, and for, just to help to explain that, I mean, it is that very reason that we need that priority setting so that we can influence particularly the 16 and 17 and 18 capital budgets.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can just add to CAO's comment, what we would also probably want to make sure is that we can bring back the waterfront master plan to council before probably those numbers are, are looked at or incorporated in future budgets. So obviously, we would want to have that piece of work done and endorsed by council first.
Great. And another question for, for bylaw, I guess. We, for property standards, I believe that we, if I'm not mistaken, in Kingston West have a contracted service for, for property standards or bylaw enforcement? I'm wondering, and I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to speak to it, but I'm just curious whether that can be brought in-house and better, and better provide a higher level of service, since we have a number of bylaw enforcement officers. Oh, there we go.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We will be coming to council with a report later on this year. We'll be releasing an RFP for contracted services, and it'll be released in the same format that it's been previously. So that is slated to come, probably be distributed within the next two weeks or so.
So I, I will just add to that, that, that you're correct. That service is already contracted out, and it has been for a number of years in terms of the bylaw. And so the RFP, obviously, we, we need to be going out to the market on a regular basis to make sure that we can obtain the, the most competitive and the best service that we can, so that RFP is going to be issued, and, and the report will be brought back to council.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I'm just curious if we have, and I think we have a very efficient bylaw enforcement group in the city, that, as I understand, it serves both Kingston East and, and, and the urban part of the city. I guess...
So I think that this is a great issue that could be brought forward this year for your motion of council, perhaps relating to future budgets, since we're talking about the 2015 budget. Well, I mean...
Fair play. That's fine.
I think that that's fair. I mean, at the end of the day, when we get into deliberations, council's free to put anything...
That's twice tonight I've agreed with you. No, I agree with you. I'll speak to that when it comes forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And very last thing is, and I, I know I gave all of the commissioners a kind of heads-up on this, could you explain to me the, what the contracted services are for... up on this, could you explain to me the, what the contracted services are for recreation and for long-term care?
Would you want to speak to that?
And for housing and social services? Just that, those are large budget lines, and I have no idea what contracted services captures.
Yes, through you, your worship. Thank you. So within recreation and leisure services, it provides a number of different opportunities. At our facilities, in some cases, we do snow removal, where Public Works doesn't have that opportunity. So that applies as a contracted service where someone is doing that. We have programming, delivering services, instructors, that is a majority of that, that's a contracted service, that is delivering that within our aquatic facilities mainly and fitness centers, and that accounts for a majority of everything that takes place.
Dock hands wouldn't be a contracted service. They'd be in the salary line. Is that correct? Sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't. I'm sorry, the dock hands, the summer dock hands that we hire, is that in the salary line?
That would be in our part-time wages line, yes, for the students.
Great. And moving down the line, long-term care?
Some of our contracted services would include the maintenance and repair of equipment in the home, snow removal and lawn cutting. The large piece would be the moving to our own database for point click care, which is our automated, automatic charting system in the home. And that was an added cost. It will bring automated charting for our PSWs and have, let us have, or allow us to design our own reports, so that we can monitor our status as far as quality, financial, and different reports with the ministry.
So just to add to that, we also have our contract with Extend Care for the management of the home. That's part of our contracted services.
How much is the value of that contract? Sorry, I should have sent you an email. You can send me that information later.
I will. Off the top of my head, I can't remember.
That's great. Mr. Ladman, housing and homelessness, or the housing department?
For housing and social services, we would have contracted services for various studies and other things, such as the step-down funding plan that we're initiating this year, or other kind of major initiatives like studies and such, that we don't have the in-house expertise for. It also captures historically a number of the homeless services that had been funded by the city itself and contracted to other agencies to provide are included within those contracted services.
Thank you. And finally, planning. I assume that most of the contracted services, I don't have the page in front of me, would be for external consultants and such? Is that where they're captured?
No, that's not in the budget. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the majority of those types of contract services for us are actually carried through the capital budget?
Thank you. That's why I couldn't find it. Thank you very much.
That's why in contracted services, you would have, for example, the Kingston Humane Society would be part of that, and our contracted services for bylaw, for example, that we just talked about, would be included in that line.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Counselor Sanik?
Thank you, your worship. Through you, two questions. One of them is, Ms. Hurdle, about the Bell Park Fairway. So the budget for this year compared to last year is going up by $21,000, and that's great news. I'm sure the working group will be really happy. Is that just for overall increased maintenance and upkeep, or is that for some specific items?
Mr. Fulmer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the operational budget increase is due to, is an increased subsidy to the corporation. So that is related to reduced revenues at Bell Park that have been experienced compared to last year. From a capital expenditure perspective, we have included additional funds for asset management. We have some roofs that need to be replaced. We have some netting at the golf range, some matting, some golf balls, that type of thing that would be included within Bell Park for 2015.
Thank you. I do know that the working group wanted to see increased maintenance. I know that that's an increased cost, but they did want to see, you know, some level of increased upkeep there. But I know it comes at as an expense. So thanks for letting me know what that's going towards. My other question is regards to the entire responsible pet ownership. So it's great to see that we're going to be exploring possibly a future spay-neuter clinic. And with the stakeholders, they just wanted to pass on that they are ready, willing, and able to sit down and discuss the possibilities and look at the options to make this idea go forward. They emailed that to me today. For the RFP that went out for the online identification system and the rewards program, is the intent of that when the RFP results come back, that that could start this year in 2015? So when the pet owners renew their tags for April 1st, do they have that rewards program to possibly look forward to this year as part of the expense for their tags?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have been reviewing the results of the RFPs. Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be able to make the deadline of March 31st, which is the renewal period. So renewals would need to be sent out the middle of March in order to make sure that people are aware. But we are hoping that mid-year, that we would be able to have a system up and running. Of course, that's dependent on the recommendations from council when we bring them back.
Thank you. Counselor Straub?
Thank you, your worship. This question is about the marinas again. I know Counselor Hutchinson asked about it and gave a partial answer, but it didn't actually address the question that I had. So you said that there was, there was no increase in fees this year for the marina users, that would be the slip fees, I guess. And then there was this other issue with the boat storage on the KP site, which to me is a separate issue of loss of slips and boat storage space. But what is the rationale for not having an increase in the fees this year? Because it seems to me that that's directly related to the loss in revenues.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I don't think I was clear in my presentation. We did increase the fees by 3% across the board in marinas. The thing that we didn't do this year is increase it by 5%, which is above and beyond typically the regular municipal increase. In the previous years, we had increased it by 5%, but because of the impact in terms of our service, this year we were cautious in terms of increasing it too much, obviously with a negative client experience that has taken place in the past year.
Okay, I think I understand now. So it is related to the, to the impact of the KP fence, in the sense he didn't want to add insult to injury by increasing the fees even higher than the 3%?
Correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Is there any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Commissioner Hurdle. And Counselor Hutchinson?
No, I don't have any questions. I have a question of process.
Yes.
We talk, a few of us talked to the CAO and this clerk about a parking lot, and I don't know if they spoke to you or not. They said that we're going to. And I'm wondering how we are going to do that. It seemed to me it would be best that people put things into the parking lot section by section, so have some idea what's happening.
So...
And staff have an ability to organize it.
So what I'm proposing is that we go through all of the presentations first, so everyone has all of the information. And if any counselors have items that they want to revisit when it comes to deliberations, to make note of those, and then put them on the floor when we get to deliberations. So if that's tomorrow, then we can put forward motions, we can move the budget, and then we can put forward motions to amend, and we can, we can go nuts. But I'd rather go through all of the presentations first, just to get that information out of the way. Okay?
Sure. As long as it's afforded for, it was going to be spoken to, but I didn't hear it. We hadn't got there, I guess. Okay. Okay. So everybody knows they can do that now, right?
Yes. So we'll, we'll likely get to that at some point tomorrow, and then, and then there'll be every opportunity to put forward amendments, and we can have discussions on particular budget items. Okay, so our next presentation is Commissioner Leger, Transportation Facilities and Emergency Services.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. I'm pleased to present this evening the Transportation Facilities and Emergency Services budgets. Both operating capital, I'd like to introduce staff that are joining me up here. Sheila Kidd is our Director of Transportation Services. Spiros Canelos is our Director of Facilities Management and Construction Services. Chief Chapew, Ray Chapew is our Fire Chief. And David Snow at the end is our Airport Manager. When you look at the slides that are presented, that are pretty uniform from departments, you might look at the slide and be somewhat alarmed. Don't be alarmed. A 16.25% increase in Transportation Services represents the second phase of the investment that the previous council has subscribed to with the Transit Redevelopment Plan. And just to put in perspective, that express transit service that's coming onboard May 1st, or May 4th, annualized would cost $2.5 million, and $1.6 million of it for the eight months this year. So of the $1.8 million, 1.6 is related to Express 2 and 3, which is Phase 2 of your Transit Redevelopment Plan. And the other $200,000 in that is, we had a resolution of council asking us to bring to this budget session additional monies to address issues, which are good issues, if you want to call them issues, related to capacity issues on the Princess Street Corridor for local Route 4. So what we're seeing is, we're observing that at peak time express on the Princess Street Corridor is packed, both morning and afternoon peaks. And what we're also seeing is midday, in the midday and throughout the day, Route 4 is at or near capacity as well. The remaining $600,000 in this group represents about a 1.6% increase in taxes, or 1.6% increase in budgets, sorry, not taxes. Capital, capital budget this year is $13.3 million. You'll see in your budget book, we have a lot of work in progress as well. And when I get to the slides on facilities, you'll see where that work in progress is at, at some major projects. And that's about $32.3 million, bringing the capital spending in 2015. That'll be underway, and mostly completed to about $45 million. Before I get to this slide, if you would allow me, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak to some of the key issues and the successes we've had in transit. Transit is aligned to our Transit Redevelopment Plan. It's also aligned to our Transportation Master Plan in terms of increasing the modal split, so that we see less passenger vehicles on the road and people electing to use other modes of transportation. So it's very consistent in what we invest in transit at the City of Kingston, you could say is an investment that we won't have to make to the same extent on our transportation network and/or maybe parking for the commuters. So to look at our success, and to look at, first of all, the operations and what's presenting this budget, we have $300,000 in cash revenues that are going down. That's not necessarily a bad thing, because the uptake is on the monthly transit passes and more people allowing and choosing to choose the frequency of monthly transit passes and the pass systems, the multi-ride systems. Also, transpasses are up. So to put that in perspective, in 2012, we had six employers, 250 employees. We now have up to 19 employers and 844 employees on the transpass system. So quite successful, a lot of targeting, a lot of marketing effort. But a lot of employers are recognizing the value of our transpass system, as are their employees. Transit revenue overall is projected to be about $300,000, and a large part of that is due to students. You'll probably see in the next few months that the AMS Society at Queens has decided to maintain the bus, the buset program, and because of that, we'll see a new negotiated settlement for council to ratify. In terms of ridership, we achieved over 4 million rides last year, and actually, it's 4.2 million rides, and that's 13% greater than 2013. So very successful. Fares, in this budget, we presented to council, I think it was in March or in 2013 sometime, a very comprehensive fare structure. You will not see any fare increases this year. What we'll do is, we'll look at the fare structure, and probably in 2016, for 2017 budget, we'll bring back a report to council on that. So now I'll focus on a key initiatives. The expense is up by $2.1 million. Express 2 and 3, as I indicated, May 4th, $1.6 million. Express 2 is the east end service. So that'll be the service that goes up across Cosley to Innovation Park and back to the major employers, KGH and Queens. And that'll serve the east end. With local routes, you'll see frequencies of up to 15 minutes service all day long for the east end service. East Express 3 is the west end to downtown and through Division Street, through the commercial corridor. The Princess Street local solution is an interim solution, the $200,000 that we're proposing. If you annualize that, it's probably about $400,000. But we're looking at introducing mid-year, and it's not a permanent solution. I think we'll have to take a look at our scheduling, we'll have to take a look at our crew guides, and come up with a solution. But a solution, a permanent solution is more system-wide. So you have to take a look at transfer points, you have to take a look at buses, at major transfer points, and how they all interconnect. So at this point in time, what we're doing is, we're asking for $200,000 to deal with cover bus. So a cover bus would pick up excess capacity on that system to make sure that no riders are left behind. Transit's the only service that provides, I think, well, I shouldn't say that. There are a lot of services in this municipality that are provided almost 365, but certainly this one here, it's only three days of the year, it doesn't run. And that's New Year's Day, Good Friday, and Christmas Day. Reduced service on Sundays and on weeknights, but it's still service all year round. What I've indicated here in terms of major initiatives, I'm just going to go back to it for a sec, to the slide. The Cataract Way Center Transfer Point needs to be redesigned. It's curvilinear in nature. It's not very effective from a customer perspective or for an operations perspective, and they're going through construction at this point in time. So we've been working with the mall owners to look at a redesign of that to make it more customer-friendly. We will be reviewing that at this point in time. We're anticipating that it's going to be significant in costs, but it's no different than what we provided at Kingston Center in terms of a contribution to the transit system, to have good, effective operations and transfer points. They are transfer points. You've got to make them effective as transfer points. So the best, the better you can do from an operations customer perspective, the more efficient and more effective and more satisfied customers you'll have. And downtown transfer point at this point in time, council has approved a, an exploration of options to do a better job of, with the transit as it grows, to provide for a good transfer point in the downtown. Right now, you have Baggett Street and you have Brock Street, and that perpendicular intersection is kind of difficult for customers in terms of navigating that and getting from Brock, or Baggett Street to Brock Street to catch your next bus. And you've got traffic issues over on Brock Street as well, and safety issues that we'd like to address, certainly. And we also will be, this year, developing a new five-year transit plan. So those questions were asked at a lot of the open houses last year, the town hall meetings, in terms of when we'll be looking at other transit service. We'll be looking at that in terms of the next five years. Probably a lot of focus on local routes and system integration, and having a more effective system at this point in time. These are just photos. I'm not going to say anything more, except just to show you a visual of the Cataract Way Center on the left, Kingston Center on the right, in terms of the most effective shelter, transfer point, transit transfer system that we have. We'd like to pattern them much like the Kingston Center. And if you were ever to observe it at a very critical time, you'd see how effective it is. It's not a wide platform that you have between the shelters, and there's effective move of... and there's effective move of ridership and people navigating from one bus to the other side. And very linear in its construction as well. And you look at Brock Street and Baggett Street and then you see what the issues are there. If you're at that bus on the right-hand side and trying to get to the other side of the street to hit a transfer, I know that we try to time things as best as we can, but it's not the easiest transfer point. In terms of transit capital for this year, we're looking at, as I indicated, works in progress, $2.7 million. Mulsanne Technology Shelter Infrastructure and Buses. Our 2015 submission is $2 million. There's two additional buses in there, they're not for express service, they're for local service and they're also for having the right spare ratio, just to get that comfortable and reliable service. Infrastructure, bus stops and shelters. What we have at this point in time is we have $200,000 for 20 to 30 bus stops. Shelter is $50,000. And the Cataract Way Center Transfer Points in there, as I indicated, we're probably looking at a solution that's in excess of a million between what we're carrying in 2014 and 2015. The Parking Operating Budget Cost Center. I wanted to draw attention to the line on this one here because it shows a bunch of zeros. Let me assure you, we do spend money in parking. It's not zero. It's a net cost of zero, but it is a cost center. What that means is that in parking, you have the excess, it pays for, the fees and the fines pay for essentially the operations, the administration, the enforcement. And any excess goes to a reserve fund for asset management. So that's a deal with existing structures, that's a deal with surface lots, and it's also to look at developing new facilities for parking. The 2015 Key Initiatives, North Block District with developments on the horizon. We're certainly going to have to take a look at whether or not we can partner with developers, private developers, in terms of replacing that parking or look at other options. So we'll have to come up and back to council with these strategies and what the preferred method is of proceeding to replace the public parking that will be displaced because of development. In the Williamsville area, we'll have to study public parking options in terms of providing public parking on a long-term basis for development that will occur there where we do have to provide public parking. And I know that this year, we've gotten the books, the implementation of the McNulty Division Street piece. On-street program, as we indicated in previous reports to council, we will be implanting Area B, which had been deferred until we had the Express 2 and 3 brought in, the second phase of express transit, at the request of council. And also because what we're trying to do at this point in time is make sure that the people that are commuters avail themselves of other off-street parking, which belongs to Queens primarily. And before we, and so what we'll do with the on-street parking program for council members that don't know is we try to deal with the availability of on-street parking for residents and for contractors. And we also want to make sure we optimize our supply instead of building off-street supply. In a lot of cases, you've got the road network that's there. So you want to allow for some element of commuter parking as well. Parking capital in the works-in-program, what you have, so the parking, just to put it in context, is a $7.4 million operation. And you get close to $2 million going to asset management. Parking capital, we have in our November 30th, 14 whip, $1.1 million. Most of that is enhanced garage and structural repair. Our 2015 submission is kind of on the light side, but what we recognize at this point in time is that in terms of replacement strategies for North Block, those will not be required to come to fruition until 2016 at the earliest. In terms of development, at least that's, I know how long it takes to go through a planning process and I know how long it takes to, for us to take a look at this opportunity and maybe other opportunities. What we will have to do is make sure that when there is replacement of parking, public parking on North Block, at some point in time as development occurs, that there's a transition plan, something like. So we've got that in our radar. Fleet Operating Budget, that also shows as a cost center. Those costs for fleet are really costs that are borne by other departments. So fleet is a cost center that allocates its costs to the departments, such as Public Works, Solid Waste, Transit Services is a big one. So we incur the cost, we procure in fleet the vehicles, the replacement vehicles, the addition vehicles. We service them, we have shop costs, mechanics costs overhead. And fuel cost is probably the biggest one, and those get allocated to the respective departments. So that's why it shows as zero. So the major budget impacts this year are fuel consumption, that the treasurer's already spoken to. It's a big impact on the diesel side and most of the consumption is transit consumption, is diesel fuel. Tire parts and supplies, obviously more inventory, more rolling stock you have on the road, the more you're going to spend tire parts and supplies, you have to ensure that it's safe and it's, the good preventive maintenance makes sure that what we do also is that the buses last longer. Insurance and licensing is an increased requirement as well because more buses on the road. I think with Express 1 in September 2013, we put 10 buses on the road. Express 2, we're going to put another five buses on the road. Fleet capital for 2015 is significant in transit. There's, these are all replacement, by the way, so that's why the slide is headed replacement. So when you see an equipment purchase, you typically see it in the respective department. So if there's an addition to equipment in Public Works, they'll typically budget it. If there is an equipment addition in transit, as you've seen in transit, the two buses you've seen in transit. But once you get into the asset management strategy that we have is that we charge enough costs and recover enough costs in the operating budget to include the capital component of replacement. So it's already figured in there. So that's why you'll see these in fleet capital budget. 2015 submission, $4.5 million. Four buses in transit, two 40-foot buses, two mid-sized buses. Public Works, I think you'll see the snow blower that council's requested in there. You also see a five-ton truck and a bunch of pickups and other service vehicles, support vehicles they need. Solid Waste, a recycler, a rear packer. Utility Kingston, various service vehicles that they have for all of their utilities. And others, the $600,000 includes things as ice resurfacers and the like. Moving on to Facilities Management Construction Budget. Just wanted to mention that also to add a bit of context in terms of that budget. That's a net budget, it's a support department largely. And total budget's about $6.9 million, I think. Yeah, $6.9 million. And to put in perspective, I don't think that we necessarily have, well, I know we don't, have a complete asset management strategy in Facilities Management and Construction Services. Very well advanced in the engineering department in terms of infrastructure management. And it's like this in many municipalities and provinces that in terms of buildings, they probably don't have long-term strategies that'll make sure that you can sustain the asset over long-term. We have a lot of heritage buildings in the City of Kingston and non-heritage buildings. And the primary focus certainly, as you'll see and I'll speak to, is we'll be on three specific campuses this year and has been for some time. So what we see in Facilities Management Construction Services, 160-plus buildings, $650 million in replacement value. 45% of those building house services are staff, and that's about $500 million, 70 of those buildings. So in terms of asset management, what we've tried to do in terms of 15-year planning, and the treasurer's shown that, is that we're making sure that over long-term, you'll see in 15-year capital, we're going to start spending more and more on buildings. We're also going to spend more on buildings in terms of preventive maintenance to make sure that the systems and the structures last longer. And if we put some emphasis on preventive maintenance and get the right split of preventive and reactive maintenance, we feel we can make assets last longer. The expenses that you see, so revenues are up this year, about $40,000 solar panel revenue. Questions were asked by individual council members on solar panels. Expenses, so that's marginal expenses. 1211 John Counter Boulevard with Utilities Kingston moving into their new facility, then more of that building becomes available for the Development Center, much-needed space for Development Center. So what we're doing is that obviously that's going to be recovered through taxes and fees. So there's an impact there, but it's a very positive impact in terms of customer service. 362 Montreal Street, we will get a Provincial Offenses Act Court and Administration set up at 362 Montreal Street. That's been approved by previous council. And that'll be, we're looking at starting construction at some point in time in 2015, maybe late 2015. And at some point in time, what that'll do is it'll allow the Wellington Street facility to be used for other purposes because they have been pressuring the municipality to look for other spaces for their Provincial Offenses Court because of the need in that building. And it's a good use of building with the reconfiguration, recent reconfiguration of community services and housing in the last couple of years. So that they've reorganized those floors that they required for more effective service delivery. And there's some space available when we bought it off the Children's Aid Society, that share. And that's what we're doing, is putting in a POA court there. If you factor out the asset management strategy, you look at 4.91%. You factor out that asset management strategy, which is you develop a POA court, you have to transfer more to the reserve fund to help service the debt for the renovations you're making. You're looking at about a 2.2% increase. Facilities Management Construction Services Capital Budget. Major whip of $13 million. Solar photovoltaic insulation at Ravens View has been approved. I think it's been approved just recently. And we'll be looking at implementing that soon. The Fire Training Center, we have a few items that were outstanding in November that were near completion of Phase 2. The POA court, we talked about some monies that were set aside. John Counter Boulevard Development Center, monies that were set aside to to make that a more effective Development Center. And Fleet Garage Public Works site. We have put monies aside last year to deal with significant development. You see the new building at 701 Division Street. The next phase of that is a fleet maintenance center. So next to the building that you see, there's also a garage where mechanics service vehicles. The conditions that they work in aren't the best of conditions. And that asset is long exhausted its useful life. And some of the vehicles can't even fit in some of the bays for service people to work on. So we've had that in the plan for quite some time to, as the next phase is to build that maintenance facility. So a lot of the monies that have been set aside for 2014, 2015 deal with soil management issues. There's a lot of soil there left from previous projects. The 701 Division Street project, the police building, there will be soil management issues coming up for this issue, also this build-out. There will be site works issues, there will be storm water management issues that result out of that. So we have monies in both 2014 and we've incorporated additional monies in 2015 submission to deal with that. In terms of Kingston Fire and Rescue, you can see the budget is a 1.9% increase. Let me assure you that the budget incorporate and anticipates any kind of wage settlements. What it does do as well is it takes a look at some of the efficiencies that the fire chief's been able to find within that department. And also, I think, very reflective of just streamlining operations. What we have in terms of key initiatives for 2015, completing the business plan for future phases of the Training Center on Terry Fox Drive. You've probably seen the tower there. You've seen some of the simulation stations, car extrication, high-angle rescue, you've got some confined spaces, you've got a whole bunch of them, you've got ice rescue. And the next phase is to take it to the next level. And the next level will present something to council at some point in time. We wanted to make sure that there were sufficient funds this year. It was $200,000 to deal with design issues in terms of that next phase, which is a classroom setting, the administrative center for the learning center, and to deal with site-related issues and servicing issues and the like. So you see $200,000 this year. The chief and I will be back before council. He's seeking partnerships, actively seeking partnerships at this point in time. He's got a draft of the business plan, we'll bring back a business plan that looks at these opportunities of regionalizing this Training Center to make it regional for other fire services, for industry, for other corporate needs, Utility Kingston needs. And it's a matter of looking at stakeholders, getting them on board, take a look at user fees, take a look at investment and coming up with a solution that works for us in terms of our investment. The other major capital project that's been approved that last year was a corporate mobile radio system project. And what you'll see this year is, I think it was a $5.8 million project, which again is to make sure that we have interoperability between city departments, city police, fire, utilities Kingston, emergency management response, first responders, mutual aid, fire departments. And what we want to do is, in terms of that linkage and that communication network for mobile radios and personal radios, we want to get that effective, effective structure. And that's what was approved last year, the year before, I think it was November 2013. And what you'll see this year is you'll see a $400,000 ass. No, excuse me. You'll see a $400,000 ass because we'd like to put up another tower. There's a tower at Magadou Lane at this point in time. And the chief and the communication officer have looked at it, the executive officer looked at it. And there's a payback period, instead of paying the exorbitant or significant rents that we're paying and they're asking for more. We can see if we can build our own structure there and have a payback period of something like six, seven years, I think it was. So we'd control that aspect of the communication. And the Magadou's part is a key one in terms of its location. So the $12.3 million I've spoken to, a lot of it is $5.8 million. And the 2015 submission, $2.4 million. You do have some protective equipment and self-contained breathing apparatus. We have to change to a new fire standard at this point in time, so it changes all the equipment. That's in your budget. And I think those are the highlights certainly for the fire department. Vehicle refurbishment is also an ongoing issue in fire department. In the Commissioner's Office, the airport now reports to the Commissioner directly. Used to report to Transportation. But with parking enforcement being integrated now with Parking Operations Administration, we've moved the airport into the Commissioner's Office. As I indicated, general orientation, the airport is not a cost center. It's not a profit center. It's an economic catalyst. And I think that you should recognize at this point in time that we've had maybe a slight decrease in revenues. That's probably why you see about 3.07%. I think of the $11,000, $7,000 is due to decreases in revenues because of, we've had one of the flight clubs no longer tenant at Hangar 4. And what we've got is we've got aviation fees that have gone up over time. But, and they're part of the five-year plan, they sort of offset that, but you still have a decrease in revenues. What we have to look at in terms of the airport long-term is how do we optimize land development opportunities at the airport? It's an economic catalyst, it should have some aviation, non-aviation-related opportunities for land development, long-term leases. We should be exploring that. And what you see in this year's budget is that we'll be doing that land use review and reporting back to council on those opportunities. What we want to do is certainly protect the long-term expansion capacity. So we have to deal with some of the growth issues, the tree issues that we started a couple of years ago with the airport. We are in the midst of updating our Infrastructure Renewal Plan, which is an extension of the review that we did in 2007 with the Airport Master Plan. And so this is for existing runways, taxiways and aprons. And we will be, as I indicated, look at development opportunities. Airport has $1.7 million in capital works in progress. Part of that is decommissioning and demolishing one of the hangars. It's only currently being used by airport staff in terms of storing off seasonal equipment. But we'll have to take a look at replacing that capacity in some other way. But we're going to be looking at demolishing Hangar 4. It's outlasted its useful life. And if you're looking at aviation-related development on airside, I think that you've got to look at opportunities. We started that with Hangar 3, now we've got Hangar 4. We started that with hangar three, now we've got hangar four. I won't speak this time in any great detail on air services development strategies, but before I get to K-Rock, council had endorsed that we look at not only retaining, enhancing flight service for Kingston Airport. We're in the midst of doing that, we've been working with consultant, we've been making presentations, we've been trying to attract, again, larger aircraft at the airport, because now we have the 19-seaters. We used to have both 19-seaters and 37-seaters, the dash eights. More and more now we have 19-seaters except when we have the need or demand, such as Skate Canada, or at student time when they go home at Christmas and those kinds of things. We want to maintain a frequency at the airport. We don't have any immediate concerns. We've had about 65,000, 67,000 in-plane, deplane passengers at Kingston Airport. That's been relatively stable over time, but we also recognize there are a lot of factors that impact airline industry's decision to provide frequency of service, including demand factors, network opportunities in terms of networking to the hub that they have at Pearson, and also taking a look at eventually obsolescent aircraft and having more effective aircraft. So those will be driving factors. So we're working, our airport manager's been working long and hard, making presentations to current carrier and also exploring other carriers as well. Rogers K-Rock Center. Rogers K-Rock Center is a $2.8 million operation, which nets approximately $700,000 annually, and the $700,000 goes to service debt and also look after future capital. That certainly isn't sufficient of itself to maintain that asset and to maintain the quality and the state-of-the-art investment that council has embarked on many years ago. We also have monies going in there from the municipal capital reserve fund that supplement that. So that's where we're at this year. What we're finding is that for the first time last year, there was a significant capital ask in terms of replacing the score clock. We replaced the score clock, and score clock is state-of-the-art, and we've had rave reviews on it, both from the users, the front and access. I don't think we'd have Skate Canada necessarily in the position of having the visual displays that it has, had we not replaced that. Our video would have failed. On go-forward basis, we'll look at the 15-year planning with SMG, who's our operator, and they've identified requirements over those 15 years, both functional, structural, and mostly functional. And what we'll do is we'll incorporate that in the presentation. Ms. Carlotta will be making a presentation to council, I think, February 17th, and we'll indicate that the budget for 2015 will be in the neighborhood of a $700,000 net budget, as I indicated, and that there'll be a request for capital funds of about $189,000 to deal with building systems, HVAC-type issues, tempered glass replacement, and a telephone upgrade. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fire Training Center, we had been told that it would become a revenue generator. Do you have an idea of what year that will start to happen, that we will have a regional center and be starting to get some revenue as well from that?
If I could, Your Worship, I think council has asked that question a couple of ways in the past. One is, will it be a revenue generator? And/or number two, will it also invest in the much-needed capital? And/or both, quite frankly, in terms of how are we going to get others to, other stakeholders to contribute? Is it going to be user fees, or is it going to be investment in capital? We're at the formative stages now of developing that business plan, and I know that the chief has had many discussions, some of them he might be able to share, some others he might not be able to share, that maybe I'll defer the question to him in terms of what the overall game plan is. Is it more on the revenue generation side, or is it more in terms of investing in the asset?
Chief?
Through, Mr. Mayor. We've already started generating some revenue. Last year, we had Atomic Energy of Canada that used our facility, generated $23,000. We have a lot of interest from another couple of groups, industry as well, that have used it last year as well, and generated another $11,000 last year. We certainly have it booked this year already, and we have numerous stakeholders that are very interested in participating in it. As to that formula, it hasn't been formulated yet, but there is a diamond in the rough with the Training Center, and it's very much in the development stage, and a lot of the interest across the province actually for it. Hope that helps answer.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Counselor Neal?
Yes, before I ask my usual rhetorical question about contracted services, just a quick question regarding transit. With the addition of the express routes, one, and two, and three later in the year, what would be, what would have been the increase in transit staff when we have the full rollout of all three? I should have sent you that question earlier. If it's a ballpark figure, I'm okay with that.
Through you, Your Worship. If by transit staff, the counselor is asking about the bus operator complement, we will probably end up in the range of about 140 bus operators at full implementation. That represents a combination of both full-time and part-time operators.
Thank you. And I've gotten nothing but praise for the rapid transit, so thank you very much. So going back to, and I hate, I don't, I'm almost reluctant to ask transit this question since their contracted services are so modest, but what do they represent?
I'll answer that at the high level. Most of the $188,000 that you see in your rollout, you've got cleaning service is probably almost half of that. Security services and contracted services, you have cash management in terms of, and you have snow clearing as well. Those are predominantly the contracted services in transit.
Great. And moving on to, I'm looking for, the fire and rescue contracted services, again, are somewhat modest, $700,000, but what would they represent?
Through, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Neal, the contracted services represent a variety of things. The fire service is legislated and governed by many standards, and part of that is the testing of fire truck apparatus, the testing of ladders, the testing of, and this is all has to be done by third parties, and that falls into that contracting services as well as other components.
Understandable. Thank you. And airport contracted services? Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess we could call it three broad categories. The most, the higher-priced one is the work that we need to do to keep some of our systems certified to international aviation standards. So we have NAV Canada keeping all of our electronic maintenance for the instrument landing system up to speed, as well as do regular flight checks, and they're quite expensive. The second broad category is keeping airport systems operational and according to standards, things such as painting of the runway markings every year, they need to be done every year. We have to crack seal all of the openings in the pavements and items of that nature. And then the third broad category is all asset management. It's keeping the structures, working with preventative maintenance programs and also repair programs for things like HVAC systems in the terminal building and items of that nature. So things like snow removal you do in-house?
I don't know anything about that.
We use a contracted service for just the public parking lot and road in front of the terminal building. Our snow removal services for the airside are all done in-house. Thank you. And parking, and I think that might be it, but the parking operating budget contracted services, about $475,000?
Yeah. In the park and enforcement side, a lot of it is software support in terms of the tools that our enforcement officers use, the handhelds, and the systems behind that. Also, in parking, I guess $200,000 combined to that is software support related, licensing related. Then in contracted services, you also have, I cannot read this, specialized tires, specialized maintenance tires retread, that's fleet, sorry. I can't read whoever's writing that is. I'll pass it on to Director Transportation Services.
Through you, Your Worship. The contracted services in the parking area would be specific to contracts that we execute for repairs in the surface lots, regular maintenance and repairs in the parking structures. There'd be some engineering, professional engineering advice around the major reconstruction work that we do.
Great. Thank you. 28 years a teacher, I bet I could have read it. Anybody's writing.
Mine's worse.
And the last one, I guess, is fleet.
Yeah. What do we have in fleet? It seems large, but about $700,000 of that is insurance services. Okay? And about another quarter million dollars is specialized maintenance in terms of tire retreads and air conditioning, and things that our mechanics cannot do that we have to contract it.
Understandable. Thank you very much.
Counselor Truman?
Thank you for your presentation this evening. I have a quick question for you. Concerning transportation in the future and the airport, I'm wondering, are you planning on putting a bus service to the airport in the future?
Through you, Your Worship. There is no plan at this point in time. When we look at our plans, there's just not enough traffic there to be able to warrant it. And I know it doesn't seem like it's a long way to extend a route out there, but operating, every minute is an operating dollar in transit, and it would be a very expensive extension to add without the ridership potential to help to offset it. So it's not in a plan at this point in time.
If I could add to that, the difficulty is in terms of balancing between fares and taxpayers. You've got 59 cents of every dollar is funded by taxpayers. So we're also cognizant of that delicate balance as well, in terms of extending services as to, you know, distinguishing between users and patrons and riders and also taxpayers.
Is it something we could look into in the future, like maybe like the students at RMC in Queens, if we were to go forward with expanding the airport, that they may want to ride out to the airport and take a bus versus a taxi? Like going forward, is it something we can consider?
Through you, Your Worship. I think that anytime we see development activity, whether it's through the development of the airport or land use development, where we see an opportunity to create a viable market, we would consider it. So I guess I could say the answer would be yes, we could consider it in the future, but it would be certainly post, probably an airport expansion, and when we see the ridership levels really increase, the air ridership levels.
Okay, good. So it's something in the future. Also, concerning the Training Center, I have a question. Are you speaking with KEDCO to help encourage more use of it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We've been working with KEDCO, they've been providing us some resources and assisting us as well, so yes.
Okay, great. I just wondered. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very quickly, Counselor Neal?
All of my questions are very quick. It's the answers that are longer. Quick question. I meant to ask this before, and it's a transit question. The engagement for high school cards to be able to be used as bus passes, that was rolled out over three years with the previous mayor's initiative, first for grade nine, then nine, 10, now nine, 10, 11. I've been asked if we'll be able to move forward and continue that with the grade 12 this year. Would that be an unsecured liability if that motion came forward? Or would you be able to find, with the little bit of money Algonquin and Limestone give us, would we be able to add grade 12?
Through you, Your Worship. When we presented on this last summer, we said we would be doing some analysis. Our biggest concern with adding the grade 11 and potentially grade 12 is that's where the highest frequency of ridership exists, if you look at grade nine, 10, 11, and 12 combined. That's also then the category, our youth category, which is essentially what's left in that fare, represents about $300,000 and some thousand dollars, or did in 2013. So we said we would come back in late spring this year when we saw the impact on that revenue stream from adding grade 11. So I can't give you an answer right now because I don't know the amount, but the potential could be as high as a couple hundred thousand dollars to be able to do that.
Would that be coming through EITP report, or would that be coming directly to council?
Through you, Your Worship. Typically, what we've done is brought that report directly to council, and part of it is also the timing, because we need to get it, we need to do the analysis, but we need as much time as we can of experience, then we need the time to present before, usually before the end of the school year ideally, and get plans for the upcoming year.
Just wanted to also add to that, just so there's, so we're clear, we did not incorporate that element in this year's budget submission. So if the directors indicated it could be upwards of tens or hundreds of thousand dollars, then that's not incorporated in this budget submission.
I think personally, it's a phenomenal program that is transit riders in training, if you will. And so if we can facilitate it, I think it would be tremendous. We didn't do a lot of really popular things, or everything we did last, council wasn't popular. This initiative was extremely popular.
So that's certainly a debate that we can have. Now, I'm just looking at time. What I'm going to suggest, I did see Counselor Holland's hand, so I'm going to give you the last question. If anybody else has any additional questions, Commissioner Lejeune, I'm going to give you the chance to respond to any other questions later on. We do have a number of external agencies that are here tonight, and out of courtesy to them, I'm going to ask is if the consent of council to move to the external agencies after this, give them a chance so they don't have to come back tonight, and then we'll have the remainder of the staff presentations tomorrow, if that's acceptable. So Counselor Holland, do you have the last question for me?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, just a quick question, I hope, on park and rides. I guess, just curious, it is in the strategic plan, I guess, to 2018, noted anyway, in terms of integration of transit and parking programs? I'm assuming that means, refers to parking rides. I'm just curious about where that fits and whether you could give just a ballpark idea of current costs, maintenance costs associated with parking rides, and/or any potential costs in these lines?
I'm going to defer that to Director Transportation to speak to the existing parking rides and to see whether or not there's opportunities or talks underway at this point in time to explore others.
Through you, Your Worship. That particular line item doesn't actually refer to park and rides. It refers to the fact that we are, the parking enforcement used to be in the Building and Licensing Department, and as of January of this year, we moved it into the parking area. So that's what it refers to. We do have park and rides. We have, you know, Centre 70 where we partner with Rec and Leisure, so we really don't have any maintenance costs associated with that. We have an agreement with Kingston Gospel Temple, and we do have an agreement with them, and we don't really pay any maintenance costs there. We added some walking infrastructure as part of that agreement. We have the Montreal Street Park and Ride, which is a partnership with the Ministry of Transportation, and we have some maintenance costs there for snow clearing and such, but I can't give you the number off the top of my head. When we add the express service to the east side, we'll be looking at a park and ride solution, again, speaking and ride solution, again, speaking with, with Rec and Leisure about an opportunity at, in around Innovation Drive and Mason Fields initially and looking for others. But, but our approach typically with those is not to have a standalone park and ride facility, but to share existing parking space.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lejeune. So, so with that, we will skip down to number five. So we'll begin our presentations by external agencies. Given, given time, I'm going to ask if presentations can be limited to ten minutes, just to allow time for questions. So our first presenter will be Steve Necto from the Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority.
Good evening and thank you for being here. Going to jump right in and basically an outline of what I'd like to cover off is included on the slide. I want to do a brief introduction about the Conservation Authority and then I'll jump right into the budget. First of all, just some basic background, the Conservation Authority is established under the Conservation Authorities Act at the request of member municipalities. We have eleven municipalities that extend from Greater Napanee through to Kingston, easterly on to Brockville and to the north in the Rita Lakes area. Those municipalities appoint seventeen members to the Conservation Authority and they form the board. The city of Kingston appoints four members. Within that area, we have ten watersheds and we, basically our program is to provide or conserve healthy watersheds for where we live, work and play, to provide safety from hazard, natural hazards and to provide spaces for recreation purposes. The overall approach of the Conservation Authority is that we provide or approaches that were preventative in nature. We provide information and education. We do our work in partnerships and we try and be as practical as possible. On the screen is a list of some of the programs. I'm not really going to get into that too much, other than to say that we have a water management program, which is our main focus and the lands section to that. In terms of the budget, the Conservation Authority has a strategic plan, which is a long-term vision, what we'd like to accomplish. In turn, there is a four-year work plan that guides the various activities that we work on to actually try and achieve those goals. Of most interest to the municipalities generally is the levy and, which is your share of the monies that fund us. And briefly, there are two components to that levy. There is a general levy where all the municipalities are deemed to benefit and pay a portion and there is also a special levy for projects that we do in agreement. And the city of Kingston has one in particular, which is the Lemoine Point Conservation Area. In terms of our budget for 2015, there are a couple of things that are putting some stresses on where we're going. First of all, our foundation is looking at decreasing its traditional funding to us for education programs. We are also looking at increasing our expenses on our flood forecasting program, in essence responding to lessons learned from last spring's flooding. There are also some additional aspects that you'll see in the budget levy to the city and they relate specifically to the Lemoine Point Conservation Area. We'd like to improve or add to our asset management fund and also provide some more presence on that property. So where does our money go? About half of it to our watershed management program, about a quarter to our lands and the balance to operations and projects. Where does the money come from? About half of it from the, from the municipalities and the balance is essentially matched by fees, a small amount from federal and provincial governments and the rest that we can generate from other sources. Our overall budget for 2015 is four million dollars. The increase in levy to the eleven municipalities is sixty, a little over sixty thousand dollars. If you look at the assessment throughout the region, the increase in the budget would amount to a two percent increase to five dollars and ninety-three cents. Come back to the Lemoine Point in a moment. So the overall funding that we're looking from the, from the city for the Conservation Authority shown on this slide with the comparison of last year's. And as I mentioned earlier, some of the aspects relate specifically to Lemoine Point, which makes it look a little bit higher than, than sort of the usual target. I'm going to leave my comments at that, worship. Any questions at your direction?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Council McLaren.
Thank you. May I ask, who provides your fleet services and your fleet support?
Fleet?
Yes.
Through you, your worship. We have our own motor pool, so in essence, what we do is we buy vehicles and we rent them back to our individual departments. So we own the vehicles. Most of our maintenance is done outside at certified service centers.
Thank you. And who provides your GIS and mapping updates?
Through you, again, your worship, we have GIS, a group within our organization. We are a mapped base organization. We do a lot of work on mapping. We work where we can with other organizations and a city is a good example, where we exchange information so we don't have to duplicate it. And I can think of an example of floodplain mapping, which is one of the things that we like to generate to identify potential flood risk areas. We got some of the base information from the city, but it needed to be transcribed into more usable products. So we did that work, gave it back to the city, but they in turn gave us the original stuff in the beginning.
Thank you. And lastly, your trail crews, how much of that is professional and how much of that is volunteer?
Again, your worship, we have trail crews, I guess, done in two different ways. We have a number of properties where we have trails. I'm thinking of examples of Lemoine Point, a little Cataract Way Creek within the city. The maintenance of those trails is done largely by our own staff. Some of it is done by volunteers or through donated services through other organizations. We also have the Cataract Way Trail, which is a abandoned rail line converted to recreational purposes. The majority of the maintenance on that trail is done strictly by volunteers.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Council Turner.
Following along with the line of questioning, who does your finance, financial services and IT office support?
Both, through your worship, both of those are done internally.
Not through the city of Kingston, you do it through the conservation area?
Yes, we look after our own.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much, Mr. Necto. Just before we move to the next presentation, I think it's very unlikely we're going to get to staff presentations C and D by the end of tonight. So for staff that are here, apologies, but we wanted to be able to give you a chance to, to go. You don't need to stay the whole night because we probably won't be able to get to you. So we'll reconvene those tomorrow. So moving on to presentation number two, the Kingston Economic Development Corporation. We'll invite Dean Burns, Chairman of the Board, and Jeff Gara, CEO.
Thank you very much, your worship, and members of council for an opportunity to present our budget for 2015. Before, we have a brief presentation, but before I get started, I want to take an opportunity to introduce Dean Burns, who's our Chair of our Board, Sandra Gibson, who is on our Board of Directors and chairs our Finance Committee, Rob Carnegie, who's our Director of Tourism and Marketing Development, and Donna Gillespie, who's our Director of Marketing, Communications and Corporate Administration. So we'll proceed on with a brief presentation. We've had an opportunity and, and thanks to council and, and to the mayor to meet individually on our strategic plan. We've had a board meeting. We've launched our plan. We've had an opportunity to sit with the board on our annual sales and operating plan for 2015. We've had an opportunity to brief our new board members last week. I'm sorry I wasn't there, I was under the weather with that nasty flu bug going around on Wednesday, Thursday. But I know the new board members from council on our board had an opportunity to look at our annual sales and operating plan and get a bit of a budget debrief and a, and a view of our annual budget. So certainly we didn't want to inundate council with too much information this evening, given the fact we've already had an opportunity to sit and meet and discuss many of the things that are composed in our budget presentation. So this is our, our request from the Board of Directors, recommended by staff and approved by our board and represents a two percent increase, which is about fifty-three thousand dollars over our 2014 municipal funding envelope that we received from the, from the city of Kingston. We've given council here a bit of a historical overview of 2008 and, and also projecting ahead as the city treasurer asked us to do over the next few years in terms of our, our projected increase over the course of time. This slide indicates a bit of a more in-depth information on our municipal funding requests and talks a little bit about our other revenues. So the other revenues we draw in as an organization come in part from the provincial government through the Ministry of Small Business and Economic Development, through the Kingston Accommodation Partners, CAP, which are the group of hoteliers that collect a destination marketing fee on hotel rooms in the city of Kingston. We also derive revenues from our partnership program and tourism, from our visitor guide. And this year, we've launched a, a, a private sector investment program where companies can choose to take a, a, basically a membership level out with us in return for certain services like visibility on our website, waiving of government grant fees where we write grants for companies. If they're a member, they don't have to pay that fee because they're a member of the organization. So working very diligently to appreciate the fact that there are pressures and sensitivities on the public administration and on the city budget and doing our best to try to increase private sector investment coming into the organization as well. We've indicated our wages, overhead and project budgets stayed fairly steady over the last number of years. We, we, we maintain a quite stagnant and, and rigid salary line item in the organization. I would argue that compared to other organizations in the city, we probably have a bit of a lackluster development plan as it comes to salary wages and increases to benefits because we're sensitive that we have to be careful with that in terms of the work we do with the private sector and, and being relatively sensitive that there were standing some major challenges in the economy right now on top of that. This slide indicates a breakdown of the organization in terms of the money we spend across three sectors, our business development sector, our tourism marketing and our corporate overhead, which again, we try to maintain at a very constant level. And I would suggest over the last number of years have been very rigid in terms of the expenses we incur and as part of corporate overhead and would be prepared to certainly align that in comparative to other organizations that are, that are in the city. This indicates a slight, a bit of a forecast on where we're trying to take our private sector investment program. So this year, we've set a goal of attracting some private sector funds into the organization through companies, small business, larger corporations, what have you, and looking at an escalating factor over the course of the next few years to try to augment that factor of private revenue coming into the organization to, in hopes, to decrease the amount of ask that we're coming to for the city municipal budget in terms of future budgets. So that certainly is, is our goal moving ahead and we've had some success of that this year in a new collaborative agreement we formed with the federal government, drawing more revenue in than we anticipated into our budget. So we certainly see that as a possible way forward where we can wean ourselves off somewhat of the need to come and ask the city for additional resources, knowing that there is an enormous amount of pressure on council and a variety of decisions that have to be made across the, the public purse. So that, in a sense, summarizes in a brief snapshot, our budget increase at two percent that we were asked to come in under and it was approved by our board, but I'm certainly willing, your worship, to take any questions or comments related to that. Tried to keep it short and brief.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Council McLaren.
Thank you. Can you elaborate on what constitutes professional development in corporate sector for that forty thousand?
Through you, your worship, a number of years ago, and I think Council Hutchinson may have been on the Board of Directors at the time, if I'm not mistaken, the, might have been the only person around who might have been on the board at the time, maybe you were, Dean. There was a recognition that while we were attracting staff coming in, that we needed to allocate an amount for professional development in the organization as the city of Kingston does in their budget for courses, for professional development, for seminars related to people's jobs to try to, you know, move them ahead to the next level and provide good learning. The board at the time felt it was very important to separate that professional development as part of our salaries and wages benefit to demonstrate as an organization that we believed in investing and, and providing our people with the necessary professional development and resources to advance in their positions and, and, and an environment of continual learning. So that basically amounts to about a thousand dollars per person per year that we invest in professional development in the organization.
I've been asked to ask for examples, please?
For examples, we've sent some folks on a leadership training at St. Lawrence College course. We've had people attend our, we have provincial and national certifications in ECD and economic development courses. So we've had folks, some of our staff, take marketing courses or best practices in municipal land use management, things like that.
And with regards to your business development, could you give me a rough breakdown between building businesses inside Kingston and attracting businesses from outside? How much of your cap, how much of your funds is spent helping businesses inside Kingston versus helping businesses come to Kingston or businesses outside of Kingston?
Through you, your worship, to the counselor, it would be about a forty, sixty breakdown. So about forty percent of our resources and, and budget allocation would be spent on attraction of new companies coming into Kingston. Sixty percent being on, not just from a programming perspective, from, from an overhead perspective and a staff salary perspective on growing, helping in growing small business and startup and larger companies that are going through challenges or growing here in Kingston. That being said, the opportunity, as we call it, or the deal, as we use in our Salesforce.com CRM management platform that manages our pipeline, a sales pipeline, the, the deal, the new deals coming in certainly are more of a cost per deal than the company growing here. For instance, if Bombardier is announced, are looking at an expansion project and hiring twenty engineers and we're working on government grants and liaising with Queens to support them in hiring engineers, that deal would cost less to us than it would be if company ABC was looking to move here to set up a distribution center or manufacturing facility.
And with regards to the numbers, how many businesses have you helped bring, come here and how many have you helped in Kingston?
So we average about anywhere over the last five years, seven to eight hundred new jobs a year we've been involved with and between seventy and eighty million dollars of new investment that we've been involved with. Certainly we can provide a more detailed breakdown on the businesses moving in versus, new businesses coming in versus business we work with. Percentage wise, we would likely be in the fifty to sixty-five percent of those results would be businesses that are here or helping grow and in the sort of thirty-five percent range of new businesses coming in. Certainly the way the economy's been over the last five years, more of our efforts have been put in place in terms of assisting startup businesses that are here and companies that are here with growing because the outside economy was fairly slow in terms of lead generation of new companies. generation of new companies moving anywhere, not just in Kingston. So that was where the bulk of our efforts are. We're seeing over the course of the last 12 months, and we discussed this with the standards and pores in regards to the city's credit rating, we're seeing a, a little more activity in terms of the outside market and more inquiries we're getting through our source of the lead generating, whether that be the federal government, the provincial government, site selectors, coming up from the outside market. But for the last five years, the bulk of what we've done and the bulk of our results have certainly been working with businesses that are here and growing them.
I'm sorry, I think I missed the numbers. Did you say 50% in Kingston, 35 outside of Kingston?
I can give you the exact numbers through your worship to the counselor, but we were... Donna's got this exact specifics. We'd be roughly 60 to 65% of our results here of businesses growing here and probably 30 to 35 of new, new businesses coming in.
Thank you.
But certainly as a new member of our board, we'll provide you with those detailed breakdowns on our 2014, 2014 operating plan. We're just finishing those numbers off, given the calendar year's just switched over.
Thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick comment. I, I, it's a substantial portion of your, just over $3 million budget comes from city taxpayers. And I guess, I know, I know you're a corporation rather than a public body, but I find that your operating budget information is very, very sparse. And I would really find it helpful if we could have a little bit more breakdown in it. And I appreciate that there are certain things, like an audited report, that typically would be made available in the public sector. You're governed by the corporate, Corporation Act, so that's different. But a more detailed operating budget or capital budget, I think would be helpful for both us and for the taxpayers who are, are paying 2.7 million, just over $2.7 million a year.
Through you, through your worship, certainly in, in partial answer, we don't have a capital budget, so that solves that part of the, that part of the question. The mayor and three counselors are representatives on our board and we're structured in that way from a governance perspective. And those details are absolutely provided to the four members and the other eight members at large. And we, we table a strategic plan, a five-year plan and a one-year detailed operating plan with detailed budget line items. And certainly, you know, that could be a conversation we have at the board in terms of veteran forming, the broader group of council. When you do have representation on the board, how that could be provided, there's certainly no, there's no secrets or no, the information is the information. And we table our annual report and our audited financial statements, so certainly something we could, we could look into.
I, I fully appreciate that we have four members of council on the board and, and that's a good thing. The point I'm making is it's probably the only agency I'm aware of that we give this much public taxpayers' dollars for that doesn't have readily available information for the, available for taxpayers, members of the community. And I appreciate that certain things that you do, because you are a corporation and in the business you're in, you can't have full and complete disclosure of everything. But I think more information, members of the public would appreciate.
And, and through your worship, I certainly through, and I appreciate that Counselor Neal, through the meetings I've had with a variety of you, that's been a subject and an issue that's been raised. That issue's been brought at the Board of Directors meeting to try to look at ways we can improve and enhance that without, as you mentioned, disclosing any information, i.e. we're working on a, a government grant with a company that doesn't necessarily want it disclosed what project they're working on because they're publicly traded or it affects their staff at the, at the organization. So certainly we, we, we heard through a lot of our meetings that we need to do a better job at more effectively communicating our strategic plan and our goals and, and certainly some of the items you've talked about. So that, that is an issue that's coming to the board, Counselor Neal, and I, I appreciate you raising it. I agree with you, we need to find ways to better, better improve that.
Great. I appreciate that. I look forward to next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sinek.
Thank you, your worship. By coincidence, following on by this, so since we're talking about, you know, how to promote KEDCO more in the broader public, during the election, you know, near the end of it, there was all those letters to the editor about economic growth. And so when I was going to the doors, I was getting a lot of what's council doing? And I said, well, we give 2.5 million, because back then it was 2.5, to KEDCO and they, you know, they lead our economic growth. And I got a lot of who's KEDCO? Like what? And so I do think we need to, you know, like promote KEDCO more. And with this 2020 plan, what I've heard is that we will shorten this and then it will be publicly available and it'll be posted on the KEDCO website and we'll do, KEDCO will do everything it can to show what KEDCO is all about so that we can, you know, everyone can know what KEDCO is and know what's happening for economic growth that we're doing our very best to generate it. Is that still the case?
Through you, your worship, yes, very much, Counselor Sinek, that we, we had developed in our strategic planning process, which is about a year and a half, two-year process, a subcommittee of the board was formed and, and rolled out the, the plan we have. We sort of envisioned sort of three phases to it, but one certainly is a very active public piece. I mean, there are obviously certain things in the detailed plan that for competitive purposes, we don't necessarily want to share with, it's a competitive environment in Ontario and in, and in eastern Ontario, forget Ontario, in eastern Ontario, in Ontario and in Canada. So there, there are perhaps certain tactics or strategies from a marketing perspective or a sales conference show perspective or a trade mission perspective, we necessarily don't want to communicate overly extensively. But point very much heard during the campaign and through my meetings with all of council that there are ways we need to better, more effectively communicate the plan and the, the sectors we're pursuing. And certainly we're in, we've been meeting over the last few weeks to talk about an insert in the wig standard, to talk about a variety of ways. I was shocked to hear readership was so low, but we may have to look at other ways to, 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 to get to the broader community, whether it be a mailer or flyer. However, to better and more effectively communicate the sectors we're pursuing and what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. So point very much taken.
Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I have a question for Mr. Guerra regarding types of, you know, along the same lines that have been mentioned here by the other counselors. We, we did hear quite a bit at the doors about questions that were being raised about KEDCO that we weren't necessarily be able to answer. I, I certainly wasn't, but I heard enough about it to, to ask this now. And, and I know that this is a, a budget presentation where we're looking at actual numbers, but what types of other changes, other than maybe what's been mentioned about transparency of the, of the budget figures, have been discussed, discussed recently by the board in order to somehow answer this, some of these criticisms that must be filtering through to, to the board as they are to, to counselors?
Through you, your worship, I think in a broad sense, a more effective communication strategy at, at a broad level, trying to ensure that the average individual and the average taxpayer, the average homeowner, may not be experts in economic development, but at least have a better sense of, of what we're doing and the sectors we're pursuing and, and frankly, some of the, some of the successes we're enjoying. In a sense, we need to change the channel. It's probably not the, the in vogue language I'm using, but gone are the days of the 100-acre, 3,000-person plant. And if the media are holding the headlines for that, then they're be holding it for a long time. We need to celebrate much more and that partly falls on our responsibility to more effectively communicate some of the small and medium-sized business successes we have and better educate the media and the community that many small and medium-sized businesses growing has the same, if not a greater, impact than the large deal coming in. And the large deals aren't happening as often as they were, not just in Kingston, but anywhere. Fact, you know, we talk to our colleagues in Ontario and nationally a number of times a year. No one's working on sort of the, the large General Motors plant anymore. I mean, those, those things are gone by the wayside. So certainly more effective communication strategy on, on our plan, on our achievements. And our achievements aren't necessarily ours, it's, it's their business achievements. We celebrate with the businesses who are expanding and hiring and creating innovation and, and new opportunities and more effectively communicating those successes to the community more broadly. But certainly it has been an issue that we've heard and, and in my personal opinion, we need to step up and do a better job on.
And just as a follow-up, if, if you had to venture a, a guess, we, we've had you guess about the percentage, Counselor McLaren, the 60/40 that you talked about, what percentage in, in, in terms of justifying the, the things that you're doing, what percentage of, of the staff's time might be dedicated to, to, to directly this kind of public relations initiative?
Well, through your worship, that's an excellent question because prior to me joining the organization, the organization spent an awful amount of time communicating about themselves and not helping business and not, in my view, from where I was in Ottawa, not effectively communicating the successes of businesses that were opening and expanding. So I think it's a very careful balance we have to achieve, that we don't want to be talking about, we, we don't want to spend so much time communicating the plan and what it is we're doing and, you know, the plant manager and investor at DuPont says, well, we never see you anymore, we're, we have problems we need help with. So we have to have a very careful balance with that. And we have a, a communication staff in place, we've got a couple interns in place, and I would say at least 20% to 25% of our staff time in our communications group, our communications administration and, and marketing will be spent more effectively communicating locally who we are and what it is we do and the successes of the businesses we're working with.
Counselor George.
Thank you very much, through you, your worship. Seems like you were going through a little bit of an inquisition here tonight, if that's the proper term, but I think it's, I'd just like to make a comment, if I may, your worship, and then ask a question of the presenter, but I, I think for those of you new to the horseshoe and some of you maybe were still in high school, but many years ago, KEDCO as a fledgling operation here in the city was a real mess. And I think it was in about 2001, 2002 that I took KEDCO to task here in the chambers prior to Mr. Guerra coming on board, as you mentioned, he was in Ottawa at the time. And a number of changes have been made and they're, in my view, because I've been working in the industry for many, many years, I think to be very positive for the city of Kingston. And we have had challenges. I, I'm sure that the, the counselors re-elected here will recall that, you know, we, we are in competition, it's, it's worldwide now, it's not just the 401 corridor. And we did have one recent one where KEDCO went to bat for us and hopefully we're still going to see something happen here. But, you know, we had a, we had a huge plant that, that was preparing to, to move to Kingston and, and a lot of that was due to, to what KEDCO did for us. So it has been a, a positive thing. But I would like to ask Mr. Guerra, if, if KEDCO's budget was reduced, and I'm thinking anywhere in the neighborhood of 100 to 200,000 dollars, what type of impact would that have on your current business plan in order to fulfill the obligations that your board has approved and city counselors have approved? And we're looking forward to proceeding with, at least for the year 2015.
Through you, your worship, certainly that would be a conversation we, we take back to our Board of Directors. From my perspective, we feel very confident about our 100 million a year and 1,000 jobs a year plan that we've laid out. That would have an impact on that. We'd reduce those numbers, point blank. I'd be recommending to the board that, you know, we'd have to get into percentages, but those numbers would be reduced. Some of our partnerships in terms of what we support in the community would have to be analyzed and we, we may have to have a look at, at staffing. So it's, we, we've done our very best to come in at modest and, and frugal proposals. We've reduced the staff position in 2014 and moved our finance and accounting into the city of Kingston to try to demonstrate that we're continually looking at that. I would suggest if you look at a broad course of organizations in the city, that not many keep their overhead at the level we have over the last number of years. But I think it would have a fairly significant impact on our deliverables and on our operations. And we'd have to take that back to the Board of Directors for a fairly serious conversation.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seena, thank you very much, Mr. Guerra.
Thank you, worship.
And we will move to presentation number three, which is Kingston Access Services and Executive Director Trevor Frey.
I'm joined here tonight by Eleanor Hands, who was the President of our Board of Directors. Before I get going here, I just would mention that 50 years ago in 1965, my grandfather was starting his first year as the Mayor of the City of Kingston, similar to yourself. So just thought I would just make brief mention of that. I can assure you that I will try to be brief in my presentation here tonight, as I know there's still a lot of things to cover off here. So 2015 will represent the 48th year of operation for Kingston Access Services. Currently, we have over 2,500 registered passengers in the city of Kingston, of whom approximately 60% are wheelchair users. Last year, we provided over 65,000 passenger trips and that does represent one of the highest usage increases in the province. Traveled over 600,000 kilometers within the city and we do service the entire city of Kingston, which is 451 square kilometers. We are kind of unique in that we do have such a large rural area. For example, by comparison purposes, the city of St. Catherine's, which has about the same population as the city, as Kingston, is only about 97 square kilometers, their entire service area. So it is, it is unique and we are seeing that have some implications on our service in that the average passenger trip is half a kilometer longer than what it was a couple of years ago, as we see more of our passengers moving to the outlying and rural areas of the city. We also operated the Kingston Area Patient Shuttle Service, who last year coordinated over 2,500 non-emergency patient transfers, of which 80% were done through stretcher, via stretcher. And the purpose of that is it reduces the reliance on regular land ambulance services so that those services can be reserved for true emergency purposes, as well as does represent a, a large cost savings doing it through a non-emergency service. As I mentioned a moment ago, we've seen a fairly significant increase in our ridership over the last couple of years. When we look at the 20 largest municipality, municipalities in the, in the province, over the period of 2010 to 2013 was a 6.7% increase in ridership. Kingston, we saw an increase over double that during that same timeframe at 14.9%. A few of the things that are influencing that, that growth that we've seen, firstly would be the aging population. And the reality is Kingston's no different, that's all across the province. With the aging population also goes increased aging at home initiatives, which is a, a key priority of the local health integration network. However, southeastern Ontario does have the highest percentage of seniors, as well as 45 to 64s in the province. So perhaps we're seeing a little bit of that impact a little bit earlier than the rest of the province on our ridership. Second thing would be increased outpatient services, and again, not something that's unique to Kingston. However, just to put it into perspective, Providence Continuing Care had a 17% increase in outpatient services over a four-year period, which represents 6,500 more outpatients. And that's just one facility. By the time you add in Hotel D, KGH and all the other medical facilities, it has a very, a very significant impact on us in that a lot of those people in the past would have perhaps been treated on an inpatient basis. have perhaps been treated on an inpatient basis. Now it's an outpatient, and they were reliant on, in many instances, transit to get them there. The third thing is the special care facilities that we do have here in the city of Kingston. For example, St. Mary's of the Lake, which I believe is only, one of only ten such facilities in the province, as well as we have the Regional Cancer Center and Renal Unit. We do see people who move to Kingston just to have access to those facilities and then rely on, for example, specialized transit to get them to those services. And the fourth key factor, again, not something that's unique to Kingston per se, is the increased accessibility of destinations. I think that everybody here would agree that, for example, the K-Rock Senator Center is infinitely more accessible than perhaps the Memorial Center was. That leads to increased demand as places become more accessible. Now, with specialized transit, it is heavily reliant on funding from the government, the vast majority of which does come from the municipality, and then the province contributes through provincial gas tax funds. And as I mentioned a moment ago, in across the province, over the three-year period there, the average growth amongst those twenty municipalities was just, was under seven percent. However, during that same timeframe, the funding to those municipalities went up over sixteen percent. We're, we're the opposite in that our ridership went up fifteen percent, funding about eight percent. We did a very good job during that timeframe of finding savings internally, reallocating resources so that we didn't require that funding to deal with that huge increase in demand. All in all, during that timeframe, we were one of two cities that had, where our increase in ridership exceeded the increase in funding that went with it. Again, as I said, we did a very good job during that timeframe. However, twenty fourteen, I'd say we sort of hit a little bit of a wall. And one of the key measurables that we use is unmet demand, in that what percentage of all the trip requests that we receive are we unable to accommodate because there's no availability? So as you can see, for the period of two thousand eleven to two thousand and thirteen, we were in the two to two and a half percent range. Last year, that number nearly doubled, up over four percent, in that that represented a significant increase, the number of trips that we weren't able to accommodate. So our twenty fifteen operating funding request, which is four point five five percent, the vast majority of that increase would go towards increasing our active driver hours so that we can reduce that unmet demand percentage, get it back more in line to where it was in the previous years. From a capital perspective, we're requesting capital for a replace, two replacement specialized transit vehicles and one supervisory vehicle for a total of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Between our operating and capital increase requests this year, combined, they do represent just under a one percent increase for the year. Now, as for the last few years, as I've been coming here to counsel the talk, I've been giving a sort of a heads up on some of the legislation that's going to be coming down in regards to the Accessibility with, for Ontarians with Disabilities Act. And this is the council now that will be having to deal with some of those things when they do come into, come into play here. I can say that in twenty sixteen, there's nothing significant in terms of legislation that'll have an impact on us from an operational or a funding perspective. However, twenty seventeen is a vastly different, different scenario. Three significant things are going to happen that year. The first thing is hours of service legislation comes into effect, which mandates that specialized transit has to have the same operating hours within a jurisdiction as conventional transit. In other words, we will be required to have the exact same hours as Kingston Transit or exceed them. And we're in a pretty good position with that, in that right now, there's only about eight or ten hours per week that we don't operate, where Kingston Transit does. For example, on Saturday mornings, we start at nine o'clock in the morning, Kingston Transit starts at six o'clock in the morning. We will have to match those hours. Again, we're not in a bad position there. The second significant change is categories of eligibility, in which eligibility for specialized transit will now include cognitive disabilities. Currently, the legislation only mandates eligibility based on physical disabilities. Net result is it will result in a significant increase in demand for specialized transit, and some municipalities are forecasting a thirty percent increase, in fact. The third one is fare parity. So currently, we comply with the legislation in that we charge two dollars and seventy-five cents per trip, which is the same fare as, same amount as what Kingston Transit charges for a regular fare. So for example, a passenger who uses our services forty times in a month pays a hundred and ten dollars, forty times two seventy-five. With the legislation coming into effect, we will be required to offer the same discounted fares as, as conventional transit. So right now, a unlimited-use monthly pass with Kingston Transit is seventy-two dollars, fifty-three fifty if you're a senior, or as low as thirty-four seventy-five with the Affordable Transit Pass program. So that same person who was paying a hundred and ten dollars will be paying, paying less with a monthly pass, in some cases significantly less. So the net result there is that it's a significant decrease in our fare revenue. The more costly aspect of it is the increased demand for the service. That same person who was taking forty trips, they're not going to take less, they're only going to increase the number of trips, which means more vehicles on the road, an increase in the demand for services. In the end, it's an estimated funding increase of twenty-two percent that year. So I just wanted to mention that Desiree Kennedy always makes, asks me to make mention of what's coming up in the future years, in particular, twenty seventeen. So I'd like to say thank you for consideration of our twenty fifteen operating and capital funding requests, and before opening up to any questions, I just would like to extend an invitation to any members of council. If you'd like to learn more about our services, please by all means contact me, and I can arrange, for example, for you to ride around one of our buses for a couple of hours and see firsthand the services that we do provide.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counsel Hutchison.
I'm not sure that this will be directed to the representative here. I just wanted to know, from the city's point of view, whether we're building in that increase for two thousand and seventeen, which I think is clearly legislated, if we're taking into account in the current budget for the next, this year and the next two years, so we'll be, and phase it in, we're not going to get a whack at all at once.
Seena, you're on.
Through you, your worship. So at this point in time, we haven't started to phase in, that's certainly a strategy that we would contemplate. We did some of that when we introduced Express Transit a year or two before. In the forecast that I spoke to council about last night, where we walked through how the pressures in the forecast were, you will see, when you get to agencies, you will see a significant increase in two thousand and seventeen that is actually the increase that we're talking about here. So we have projected it. How we, how we facilitate it or phase it is going to be part of the strategies that we'll start introducing beginning in twenty sixteen.
Thank you.
Counsel Neal.
Thank you, and I look forward to rejoining the board next week. A couple of questions. I was quite pleased to see that CAPS revenue seems to have been maintained to a certain extent. I know that there's other players in the game now, but it's great to see because I know that that was in. I'm assuming that continues to be a revenue bonus budget item that you have.
Yes. So last year, the number is down significantly to the prior year. The reason for that is because the healthcare facilities that are part of the three SO organizations, so that'd be KGH, Hotel Do, and Providence Continuing Care, they've, they're starting to handle those, a lot of those services on their own now internally. So it is down compared to two thousand and thirteen. However, we did see some of those organizations using our services a lot more than we did expect them to, so that does contribute to a lot of the increase. What we have done, though, is we actually have a two-tiered pricing structure now, in that for the facilities, organizations that are part of three SO, they are paying a higher amount than what the other organizations would, the Fairmount Home, the Rideau Crest of the world, the Extendicares. So we've gone to the two-tier pricing structure, and the CAPS program now is, I would say, a one hundred percent cost recovered now.
Great. And my other question is, I know we've added and we're encouraging the taxi industry to add more accessible taxis. I know in the past, in an effort to meet some of the unmet demand, you as an organization used taxi services whenever it's feasible. Have the accessible taxis helped you with that at all? Do you continue to have a relationship with, with the taxi industry to help with unmet demand?
Right. So we do use taxi services, the vast majority of which is what I'll refer to as regular taxi service. And when we do use a taxi, it's usually because of a couple of factors, either vehicles, our vehicles might be running behind, doing an operational breakdown or something like that, or when it's going to be an extended wait for a medical callback. Those tend to be the most, the typical times that we would use a taxi. In reality, the accessible taxis, I would say, have had a very minimal impact on us. A, from a trip request perspective, in that I think in most instances, people will still call us first and foremost, because compared to the taxi industry, we are very much low-cost compared to the taxi industry. Where I think the real benefit of the taxi, of the accessible taxis has been, in those instances, the person has a last-minute trip request, which we can't accommodate, at least there is another option there for, for people. So I think that's where the real benefit. I don't think it's had an impact on us from a trip request perspective. So right now, we are about three percent of all the trips that we do are through taxis. The number has gone down in the last couple of years, as we've been able to put, get more, transport more passengers on our vehicles as opposed to relying on the taxi industry. We do have a very good relationship, certainly with, I would say, one of the taxi companies, in that we, our drive, we provided the training to the taxi industry when they did receive those accessible vehicles. So there is a good relationship there, I would say.
And the impact of our new buses that are more accessible with the kneeling, Fred?
Yeah, I would say there has been some impact on our, I do believe that they do get used. I, you know, Kingston Transit, I think they probably have more statistics, I don't know if they keep statistics on the number of times, for example, that their drivers will have to use the wheelchair restraint system on their vehicles or anything like that. I do think that probably, there has been some impact. I mean, I certainly, when I'm driving around, I will on occasion see a person at a regular bus stop who is in a wheelchair. What that percentage is, I really wouldn't know. Again, I still think that in a lot of instances, people are going to call us first and foremost as we are door-to-door versus having to get to a, you know, a bus stop, which in many instances, you know, right now, currently, not, might not be an option for them.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Counsel Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and through you, just a couple of quick questions. Has your board explored any other sort of revenue-generating activity ideas? For example, other cities have buses wrapped in advertisement. I know, I'm not sure how that would apply for accessible buses or in your model, if you're limited by legislation or anything like that, but have you explored that anticipating this sort of revenue shortfall coming up? And also anticipating the fact that you're always behind in demand and you're trying to meet that, you're, you're working pretty hard, it looks like to me, so.
A few years ago, I did explore advertising on our vehicles, and I came to find out that specialized transit is not exactly a, what I'll refer to as a desirable advertising point. Reason being is, when you think about, you know, a Kingston Transit vehicle, you know, during prime times, there might be thirty, forty people on that vehicle. Specialized transit, you're never going to have that sort of scenario, so there wasn't really, we weren't, what I, again, what I would say desirable. It certainly was not a huge amount of money. In fact, if my memory serves, I think we were talking about twenty-five thousand dollars total, based on the, when the question's asked, how many kilometers do you travel each year, how many vehicles do you have, and that sort of thing? It wasn't a significant amount of money, but again, twenty-five thousand would be twenty-five thousand dollars, but it's not a huge amount.
Thank you, and it just, it seems, a short comment, if you may, it just, it seems to me that there's an opportunity for some increased synergies between both yourself and maybe Kingston Transit, but also with other organizations that seem to be making use or advertising your services, or could be making more use of your services to create different markets. And I can't, I can't put my finger on any right now, but I feel like you should, and your board should be working really hard to open up the box for partnerships, because I think there's something there that this service will continue to be in demand and the demand will continue to increase, and you're going to need those partners to get to the next level. Thank you.
Okay, so no other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Frey. So our next presentation this evening is from the Kingston-Frotonak Public Library. So invite Patricia Enright, Chief Librarian and CEO, and Christina Ridgely, Budget HR and Analyst.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. I'd like to take an opportunity just to introduce our Chair of the Library Board, so Claudette Richardson, and Christina Ridgely, who is our Budget Analyst. So thank you for this opportunity to come and speak to you tonight about our draft operating the capital budgets, and I'll try to move along quickly. So just a bit of history, we're a relatively new organization. We were created in nineteen ninety-eight when the Kingston Public Library and the Frotonak County Library Systems amalgamated. And under provincial legislation, the Public Libraries Act, we are a union library. So the Public Library Act requires municipalities participating in a union library to create an agreement outlining the percentage of costs each municipality will pay. And so under the nineteen ninety-eight agreement between the city and the county, the city is responsible for eighty-seven percent and the county thirteen percent. And the facility costs are not part of that eighty-seven thirteen percent, so the city of Kingston provides funding to the library board to operate and maintain the five branches in the city, and the townships, the four townships in the county provide the facilities in the, their communities. And under the Public Libraries Act, basically, anything that you decide in terms of our budget is binding on the county. So you probably know, we operate five branches in the city of Kingston and eleven branches in the county. And just a bit of information about two thousand and fourteen, so system-wide residents borrowed just under one point four million items, and that's up slightly from two thousand and thirteen numbers. Accessed online databases over two hundred and thirty thousand times and downloaded just under seventy-six thousand ebooks and e-audio, e-audiobooks. And we also offered a variety of programs, from our inaugural Writer-in-Residence to Hometown Homefront, that recognized the contribution of Kingston and Frotonak County residents in World War One. And actually, one of our most popular programs was three D Printing one oh one, so there was a lot of interest in, in that. And just to, we also were quite proud that our Director of Outreach and Technology won the WJ Robertson Medal for his contribution to public librarianship, and he probably won't be talking when he knows I use this photo. We've also been shortlisted again this year for a Ministry Public Library Service Award, and this was for ostentation, which was our celebration of the two-hundredth anniversary of the publication of Jane Austen's Pride and Prejudice, and the awards will be presented next week. So just in terms of budgets, so library services, as you probably know, are changing, and most of the changes are driven by technology and its impact on the publishing and media worlds. And what we hear from residents is that they want more and better online services, more access to technology, as well as the support and training to use that technology. At the same time, they also want the physical spaces and collections that we've always provided, more programming in more branches, as well as wanting to see the library out in the community. And these competing demands put pressure on our operating and capital budgets. So in two thousand and thirteen, the library board developed its strategic plan, KFPL Vision two thousand and twenty, to provide direction for the organization to try to respond to this changing world. And the library board acknowledged that we can't be everything to everyone, and so that means focusing on services that are unique and impactful. We have been reviewing our services and programs in the last couple of years to ensure that the ones in which we're investing our resources are the ones that are needed and are used by our residents. And the strategic plan was used to develop our operating and capital budgets. So overall, library expenditures have increased two point two percent over two thousand and fourteen, and because we are a service organization, about seventy-eight percent of our organization, about 78% of our operating budget goes to salaries, wages, and benefits. We are requesting an additional 1.63% over 2014, and the additional funding includes a negotiated increase with our QP employees and increases in benefit costs. We've also reviewed our budget lines for our materials to reflect changing patterns of use and changes in the publishing and media worlds. The library materials budget includes additional funding for eBooks and other e-resources. And the budget had remained flat since 2012, and that was in order to meet the budget guidelines set by the city and to fund increments as a result of a pay equity review with our QP staff. So there was just no additional room in our budget at that time. In term, in terms of system-wide inspect, sorry, expenditures, they've increased by 6.29%, and the largest percentage is going to additional security at some of our city And the facility costs, as I said, are pulled out of that 87-13 split, and one of the largest percentages this year was snow clearing. In terms of revenues, the library is funded by the City of Kingston, Frontenac County, the Province of Ontario, and by self-generated revenues. And so we're respectfully asking for a 2.28% increase over 2014 figures, so an additional $134,000. And in terms of self-generated revenues, those revenues have remained relatively flat, but we will reviewing them in 2015. And in terms of our capital budget, as you probably heard, the central branch, which opened in 1978, its major building systems have become to the end of their useful life and need to be upgraded or replaced. The project will be phased over three to four years. And at this point in time, the Library Board has engaged the architectural firm HDR as the prime consultant for the project. So Phase One will include design and project specifics as well as initial work on the building systems. And the goal is to keep the building in operation as much as possible during the project. And I think one of the Board's strategic initiatives is to create a central branch that reflects its unique position in downtown Kingston and its potential for stronger partnerships with other organizations and for a greater contribution to municipal objectives. And so we hope that the central branch renovation supports Your Worship's vision of a smart and livable community that includes encouraging and promoting residential development in the downtown. And we know that residents are looking for services and a strong vibrant, vibrant public library is attractive to them. And in terms of the, our other branches, so we do require some facility repairs at the Isabel Turner Pittsburgh Branch and Kingscourt Branch. We also are looking for some kind of renewal money. At the, for the Isabel Turner Branch, it's a very busy branch, and the furniture and finishes are coming to the end of their life. We are also looking for some money for our technology, and that would be for our servers for the, and that's a shared cost with the county. So finally, just looking to the future, we are trying to be responsive to our residents. And so in 2015, we will be offering some new services, including Lynda.com, which provides access to more than 2,000 professionally-produced online courses in technology, creative, and business skills. And in the spring, we'll be launching Hoopla, which will allow patrons to borrow digital movies and music. As a pilot project, we will be making Lib Cabinet, and sorry, that's the, the name from the company, available in the City of Kingston. It's a 24/7 service, so you can check in and check out materials. And it's a way to raise awareness of the library and to extend our reach. And we're hoping to partner with the City of Kingston and make it available in municipal facilities. And just in terms of programming and partnerships, we'll be offering some new and returning programs. We're partnering with Downtown Businesses and Queen's Comic Book Legion to bring you King Con, which is in March, and it's a celebration of science fiction, fantasy, gaming, and comic books with speakers, workshops, and gaming tournaments. We've also been working with the Cultural Services Department on a number of programs to promote and support each other's initiatives. And we'll also be introducing 3D printing and continue to offer technology support and training with our tech tutors. And so finally, Your Worship, you described your vision of a smart and livable city where that celebrates its past but also looks to the future by harnessing our assets and by creating a culture of innovation where creative thinking, invention, and an openness to new ways of doing things is seen in every city department. The Kingston Public Library shares, and we hope contributes to achieving that vision by providing collections and services that support economic development, innovation, and creativity, by providing welcoming accessible spaces where residents are able to access, to access technology from Wi-Fi to 3D printers, and by enhancing the quality of life with programs and collections for all ages. And we would not be able to do this without the support of the City of Kingston. So we thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Bonus points for bringing in some of my inaugural speech. That was great.
I was going to say two swarm.
All right. Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, our next presentation is the Kingston Police Services Board, and I'll invite Andrea Riss, Board Chair, and Chief Larry Shell.
Good evening. I'm here tonight with the Chair of the Police Services Board, Andrea Riss, Deputy Chief Angie McNeely, and John Howes, who's my Finance Director. I'll take the opportunity at this time to acknowledge the assistance provided by City Treasurer Desiree Kennedy in helping us set up a budget. Thank you very much. The present Board is composed again of Andrea Riss, Counselor Kevin George, Mayor Brian Patterson, Bill Hackett, and John Clama. And our, our budget was presented with, to the Board in October 2014. Just a quick highlight, I gather we, I'm not going to go into details of it, but it's to educate especially the new counselors. The organization, the Kingston Police is set up and divided into four divisions. Four inspectors oversee these respective areas, one being CID, Patrol, Administrative Support, and Operational Support. And they're supported by three civilian directors, one in charge of HR, IT, and Finance through the Deputy Chief to me. Our authorized sworn officers is 198. We also have in addition of three that are, their salary is paid by another agency. They're coned out, but they report to Kingston Police. So our official complement still remains at 198, but we also have 59 civilian employees. The organization is set up in a way where, like all organizations in the province, where we're mandated by the province to come out with a business plan. And that's done every three years. So we have a business plan in place now for 2015, 16, and 17. And these are the four areas that we are, from a strategic point of view, mandated to, to work in. So it's Community Safety and Law Enforcement, Community Engagement, Organizational Excellence, As you can see from this slide, we've looked at a number of different organizations in the province, and those that have the asterisks are organizations we feel are very comparable to ours. And these are data or stats that we accumulated from the CMA Census Metropolitan Area. One organization that's not here is Chatham-Kent because they're not part of the CMA. But you can see that Kingston falls within 141, and from a cop to pop population, it's certainly one of the lowest in the province. So for Kingston's growth, our staffing model has remained fixed from 2010 to 2015. At the same time, from 2009 to 2013, the population has increased from 5.8%, while the number of households has increased to 7.4% in Kingston. So simply, this is as an FOI, where we're not looking to expand our resources, but it's simply something that you need to take in consideration. So the budget per se, we're looking at a 2.7 increase, and it's a total increase of The, again, this, the budget was approved by the Board in the, in the fall, and we're certainly looking for your support tonight. I'll provide some details as to the, the budget per se, and I'll start with wages and The area that, that, or I should say, this area represents 87% of our operating costs. So if you can keep that in mind, it's an increase of a little over 900,000. So if we break it down, the wage increase adds a little over 400,000, actually, it's 401,000. So left over from last year's wage settlements, we add another 115,000 to the, this year's wages. Because in October, November, December, there's a 1.5 wage increase that was incorporated. As well, you'll see their part-time wages. We were struggling with some of the staffing, some of the overtime, so we've hired two part-time special constables to assist us managing courts. We've hired two part-time communicators in the Communication Center to assist us in staffing that area. It's, 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 it's an area that's very important. That's where we take our calls for service and we dispatch them out. We're struggling when the individuals there were off on, on sick or, or on annual leave or were on course. We felt important that they were there to support us, very qualified individuals. We're lucky to find them. And the third area, we haven't staffed yet, but we're going to be staffing their area with part-time staff, and it's, we're going to be calling them cell block attendants. Every time we bring in a prisoner, the way we function now is they're monitored through CCTVs through the three separate areas by the staff sergeant at the patrol area, by our staff in the comp center, by our staff at the front desk. To me, it's not an acceptable way of doing business or providing security to our prisoners. I need somebody to go there every, by an acceptable standard of every 15 to 30 minutes to do a visual, ensuring that they're safety. So for 2015, this area in supplies and materials, it's an increase of 26,000, so it's only 1%. An area, for example, we're always looking at efficiencies, and we found a new vendor, and we were able to save in this area easily $5,000. Looking to contracted services, for 2015, we've increased by 152,000 or 8.5%. Insurance on the fleet and buildings are up by 32,000, and that's the same policy that we use as a city. An area that's increased by 90,000 is IT, and I think everybody appreciates that. We bought in office 2013, we've increased our network security. We bought in some new tablets for the MDTs, for the cars, for the police officers. And now we're working on, and we're going to be having a launch in February for the new 911 where people are calling in and have a hearing impaired. We can now be able to assist them through taxing. So those are all areas in the IT world that we're bringing in. From a cost recovery perspective, an area that we do fairly well is background checks. Even though we, we only charge $25 for a background check, certainly one of the lowest price that we deliver in the province, this brings in a lot more people to, to Kingston for the background checks. So it's an area that we're able to provide a good service quickly, yet we're able to, to, to bring in some funds through the organization. Another area is court security and prisoner transportation, or total cost in that area is 1.4 million. Something to keep in mind, but we, we do have a budget recovery of 588,000 or 42%, and that's from, from the ministry. So it's quite helpful. And as you can see, you know, we've, we've identified, as we did last year, Queen's University with their 100,000 contribution. And as the next slide indicates, you know, we're heading in the right direction. We've been working very closely to try to manage a very conservative budget, very tight budget. And as you can see, I think this speaks for itself. Now, this is a pretty interesting slide. It demonstrates that especially at, since 2008, 2009, less and less of tax dollars paid has gone towards policing. So in Kingston in 2014, the police cost represents 18.5% of the net municipal tax dollars collected. And I can assure you, if you look at other municipalities, it's a lot higher. So if you break down the operating costs, and rightfully so, 70% of it goes towards frontline policing. And that's your patrol officers, you see, the uniform officers, the tactical officers, CID, those that work the front desk, forensics, any, any of those services that are immediate affect the, the service, calls for service. And for capital requests, as you can see, we're at 1,205,500. Fleet, in the fleet area, we're looking at a new prisoner van, which is at a cost of 125,000. And we're looking this year as well as replacing eight patrol cars. And that's at a cost of 290,000, but that's including outfitting all these cars with the security measures that we need in transporting prisoners, as well as the IT equipment and the vehicles. It's not, it's not cheap to drive a police car these days. And so all this, we're looking at a new canine van to replace the one we have, and that's an approximate cost of 50,000. The questions asked, and I'll, I'll bring it forward now, we do have approximately 120 vehicles in our fleet, and we try and manage the, the, the usage of these vehicles where when they, we reach, they reach about 150,000, we try to rotate them through. Sometimes we're able to move them around in other sections that don't put so much mileage on, on their vehicles, but that's essentially the plan. And I'd suggest, suggesting to the city as well, we put aside 100,000 for the building. I mean, we have a, a very good building. We're very proud of it, but it's like anything else, we're at about a seven-year term now, and, you know, we need to start putting some money into it to keep it updated. And I'll finish off with this slide. Next year is our 175 years of providing service to the community. We have four major events planned. All of these four events are geared to fundraise a charity of choice, and we're, we're letting each of these groups decide which groups that they want to identify. The one I'm here actually to, to inform you about is the, is the Gala. That'll be in May, and we're hoping to, the Gala is not, is simply not for police officers, it's for the community. And we're hoping that the counselors and their constituents come with us and celebrate. And the target of charity we have identified is to use diversion. So that's my budget. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Counselor Neal?
Yes, I want to thank you for coming in almost right on target. I know that, that isn't the case in a lot of communities because there is a compulsory fund aspect to police budgets, but you have consistently come in at or very near the targets that have been set, and I thank you for that. As I understand it, having spoken to one of your Board members, all of your contracts, with the exception of one small contract for a smaller group, are up to date as of 2014? Is that accurate? So, so you are, in a go-forward basis, there aren't any foreseen surprises in the coming year?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you very much. Moving on, our next presentation is from downtown Kingston Business Improvement Area. We have Doug Ritchie, Managing Director, and not Ed Smith, it looks like Nick Waterfield. and not Ed Smith, it looks like Nick Waterfield.
Mayor Patterson, members of City Council, city staff, all those gathered. My name's Doug Ritchie. As has been said, I'm the Managing Director of the Downtown Kingston Business Improvement Area. Ed Smith sends his regrets. He couldn't make it. So our treasurer, Nick Waterfield, came along. I hope you all got one of these in hard copy because all you're going to see up there is pretty pictures. Downtown Kingston is a business improvement area. It's a piece of geography that gets designated when the municipality and a business community use the sections of the municipal act to go through a process and create an area with, that is overseen by a Board of the City, is created, and the membership of that organization have the right to place a voluntary additional tax on themselves for purposes of promotion of that area to meet the mission of, yeah, promote downtown. So what we do, one of the white sheets inside this purplish jacket is a summary version of the Downtown Kingston Strategic Plan with programming examples. So what we're best known for is the marketing department, and it's the biggest part of our budget and activity. We do a cooperative advertising program that mainly our retailers participate in. We run the Kingston Buskers Rendezvous, the Limestone City Blues Festival, Music in the Park, and many, many other events that we sort of own and operate as the principal, often with some city involvement in terms of equipment and setup, and the sites are usually parks and streets and road closures and what have you. And then there's like a second and third tier of little tiny one-off events that just need some support and come and ask us, can we run some ads for them? Give them some advice? Use our social media connections to promote their event? The second area of endeavor is municipal liaison with matters such, well, and some of the priorities of the current board include residential development downtown. So working with the city on the police station block, but the other blocks of the north blocks and other locations that are looking. We need to cooperatively work in a way that we make sure we capture the current trend towards favoring downtown residential. Also in that category is the Big Dig. Phase Three is coming up, Big Dig Three. It's work that has to be done. We're, it's not, it's not good for business, but we, certainly, we've adjusted our budgets in Big Dig years to have a lot more resource available to add additional promotions and communications and public relations around those events. But first and foremost, we need to work with the city and the contractor to set a calendar and a communications plan that does the least damage and has the most potential to provide benefit, which it certainly will over the long run because absolutely the work has to be done. Downtown environment, another priority of the board is downtown cleanliness. And we're very happy to be in the midst of working with city staff on a program that should get more out of the BIA, more out of the BIA's members, and more out of the city too by coordinating efforts, setting one central point of communication for issues that affect half a dozen or more city departments. The CAO has taken an interest in this program, and we've certainly set money aside in our budget to promote it and participate in other ways. Economic development, we have vacancies downtown. So we've added over the last two years an additional twenty thousand dollars to our recruitment budget to make sure we update our materials, put together a new lure kit, which we have done now, land use inventories, market studies, pedestrian counts, vehicle counts, the information that property owners and realtors need to speak with interested new businesses and help them make their selection. Advocacy, we sometimes have to step aside and represent our members' interests. Recent example being the No Casino Kingston Organization, of which we were a member and played a role in the municipal election. And to do it all, we need to run a credible and member-driven organization. We have a staff of eight and offices King and Princess Street, and a committee structure, two annual, not two annual, two general meetings a year for our membership, newsletter, weekly news flashes, electronic news flashes, a long list of member communications techniques. And we have enclosed our levy that the board has approved. It is a 2.5% increase over fourteen, and it comes in at 1,112,728. The purplish insert inside the jacket, we call the sudden impact document. It was developed by a chartered accountant, who was our volunteer treasurer for a number of years, who said, really, there's so much activity that doesn't show in your audit that we need to capture that information and present it. So the left-hand box was the 2013 operating levy, the yellowish box. And the right-hand box is the additional activity that it created. In an average year, out of what added up to 3.4 million in that right-hand yellowish box, 250 to 550,000 does show in the audit, but the other 3 million in activity doesn't show. It shows in somebody else's audit. So every time we have a project, we're looking for partners, grants, the event itself to produce revenues, and a wide variety of other fundraising mechanisms. So that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Hutchinson.
Crushed in here, I can't even get at the button. The, thank you for the presentation. I have to say, as I usually do, that DBIA does a lot of good work. Appreciate it. We've heard that, we know the DBIA assists businesses in certain ways, and KEDCO does also assist small businesses, and we heard some concerns about that. I was wondering how you would contrast how the DBIA assists businesses with how KEDCO assists businesses?
Well, we have, we have a large board. It's representative. It has fifteen downtown businesses on it, two city councillors, one alternate. So it's selected by an election, but first we have a nomination board that makes sure that they're, the geography and the business types downtown are all represented on that ballot. So we have restaurants, retailers, lawyers, optometrists, pharmacists on the board. And then we have a committee structure that fans out involving sixty or more, and then general meetings. So our members tell us exactly what we need to do in a given year to help them do business. So it's pretty organic and built in that we're very aware of what our businesses need. So we, we ourselves, as I said about the lure kit, we produce pretty valuable information about downtown, which includes economic impact studies on our festivals and on municipal structures, the K-Rock Center, the Grand Theater. And we're not so much personally in the active recruitment business, but rather assist existing realtors and property owners whose primary business and way of making their livelihood is by renting downtown commercial. So there are firms that now specialize in that. We also have the position of being sort of third-party neutral and are just as valuable to an existing business or a new business considering locating in the area or an existing business thinking about expanding or starting another business in the downtown because we have no bias. We have our own resources. We do the research. We hire reputable firms to do it. So we're more of an assist to realtors and property owners. One of our big first successes was The Gap way back when. And they were scheduled, they were planning to locate in another area, but our materials presented in partnership with the Realtor were not sufficient to actually change their decision, but it was sufficient to redo their own market research, putting a heavier consideration on the downtown. So a lot of places like that, especially fifteen years ago or so, they wanted a mall location or a freestanding, build-from-scratch, green space sort of operation, not renovating a historic property, a lot of different skill sets involved and working in a downtown. But when they redid their research, just because our research indicated certain things to them, they found out that downtown was the place for them in the city of Kingston because of the location of adjacent markets.
Okay, that was half my question.
Oh, shoot. I don't think it's fair to ask the BIA about what KEDCO does. I think that they can only, is that the half of the question that you're referring to?
Well, I was wondering what their perception was.
Yeah, I don't think that's fair. I think it's fair to ask them what they do, but I don't think that it's fair to ask them to compare themselves to another organization.
Fair enough. Because my next question was how they thought they might better collaborate with KEDCO.
That's a fair question.
Well, we do collaborate with KEDCO. In fact, they helped us develop this new lure kit. We used lots of their materials, and some staff time of theirs was allowed the project. And also, we, as a business organization, are the liaison spot. So the Chamber, CAP, and KEDCO all send a liaison person to sit at our board meetings and give reports about what their organization is doing at the time. So we get a monthly report from all three. And I'm not sure it makes sense that it could be the tail wag and the dog there. The other, some of the other organizations are, you know, represent the entire municipality and are much larger, but we've taken the initiative to use our board meetings as the liaison spot.
Thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Yes, first of all, four years ago, you may remember, I whined about the lack of recycling opportunities in the downtown. And I want to applaud that, I think collaboratively between the BIA and the city. It's now available on every other corner, it seems, which is great. And I do know that, that you have an excellent policy for keeping the sidewalks clear and for fighting the scourge of graffiti that seems to be happening in every downtown. So I applaud your support on those initiatives. You may also remember, four years ago, I asked about a couple of programs that were the BIA partnering with some support from the city. And one was Blues Fest, and the other, I think maybe, was the Jazz Festival. And at the time, I suggested that, even though it was slightly outside your client area, that the mansion, which has blues or jazz seven nights a week for the rest of the year, might be included in those programs. Do you, do you have any objection to including them? Since I believe that part of the money for those events are taxpayers across the city supporting those very worthy events?
We do have at least one partnership with them because we're very involved in Homegrown Bat Music Festival, and they are one of the venues. We do a lot on that event too, but the conflicts, when we know exactly the names of all the businesses that pay the levy that funds our organization, we are pretty strict about working inside the boundary line. But we make lots of exceptions. If you look at this jacket, you'll see the, on the backside of the back cover, a hundred community partners. And we don't really worry exactly. So, and as the nice lady said, the library is one of them, and they don't contribute to our levy, but the community would obviously call that downtown. So it's not a hard and fast rule, but we try not to engage in mission creep either and start doing more than promoting downtown.
I guess my only point is the same point I made four years ago, and that's that on those music venue events, which are highly, highly successful, Blues Fest and Jazz Fest, that are reliant on city taxpayer support to a certain extent. I know the bulk of it comes from your levy, but it would be, I think, a nice consideration to include a business that's only a block and a half outside your district.
Fair enough.
Point made.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And now we will move to our final presentation of the evening from KFLA Public Health, Dr. Ian Gammel.
Your worship, members of council, esteemed colleagues, and ladies and gentlemen, thanks for the opportunity of coming to tell you about the cost-shared budget for KFLA Public Health for 2015. That's only the top budget that you see on this slide here. There we have many other budgets I'll tell you about. I'll also try to tell you about our budget process, but also a little bit about our programs. I want to send regrets, or bring regrets, I should say, from my board chair, Charles Simmons, but also to recognize the members of this council who are on the Board of Health, whom I only talked to on the telephone, and I hope to, looking forward to meeting next week. And that's Counselor Allen, Counselor McLaren, and Counselor Stroud. It's really important, I think, for you to understand that what public health does is prescribed under government standards called the Ontario Public Health Standards. And these standards are standards that we have to agree to to get our grants from the Government of Ontario, Ministry of Health and Long-term Care, and for which we are held accountable. These standards constitute the majority of the work that we do. These standards constitute the majority of the work that we do. And the focus, if it's not about prevention, then we shouldn't really be doing it. We're the front end of the health system, and the focus is on preventing disease through health protection and through health promotion. So the Ontario Public Health Standards include the following things, I'll go through them very, very quickly. Infectious diseases, and you can see some examples there, including things like vaccine-preventable disease and tuberculosis. Lyme disease is a big one, of course, that we deal with now. Environmental health issues, so ensuring food safety, water safety, and many other things that go on behind the scenes in this area to ensure that the region is as safe as it possibly can be from a health point of view. Emergency preparedness, this is something that, as you know, has increased over the years, and every municipality is now required not only to have a plan, but to have exercises. And we participate on the municipal control group with our colleagues from the city bureaucracy. Chronic disease and injury prevention, including prevention of injury, prevention of substance abuse. Here we're talking about things like healthy eating, active living, to address the epidemic of obesity in our, in our community, not just here, but across, really across North America. And also particularly around active living, and we've had a lot of really good collaborations with the city staff on things like bicycle lanes and other things that help to encourage our population to be more active. And finally, family health, that's reproductive health, so parenting, breastfeeding, helping parents to be as good as they possibly can be. Children's health, and our Healthy Babies, Healthy Children program, which is a modified home visiting program based on high risk as assessed when women deliver either in, either in hospital or at home. So about our budget for the, and this is only the cost shared budget to which the city of Kingston and the two counties contribute, it's considered by, it's put together by our staff, of course, our management is reviewed by the budgets, the board's budget review committee, and required as necessary, revised as necessary, as the board directs us. The Board of Health then considers the budget, modifies it as necessary, and then would approve the budget that is then sent to our colleagues, Desiree, Dennis, Richard, and so on. This is the budget for which the municipalities have funding responsibility under the Health Protection and Promotion Act, which I'll show in just a moment or two. So we then notify our colleagues of the approved budget, and we submit it to the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care for the provincial grant. That's, I was mentioning before, about accountability, and we do get a substantial grant towards our cost shared programs. But I never approve new resources until that grant has been received, usually about halfway through the year, that's how long it takes them to get it to us, and that's to protect the municipalities from any liability they would have if the grant is not as we had expected it to be. So the board, the budget is set by the Board of Health, and the municipalities do help us by raising the funds through the levy for the expenditures that we have for those cost shared programs. And that's the section 72 of the Health Promotion Act, which stipulates how this is done. When we do our budgets, we always consider, first of all, the economic climate, the economic and fiscal restraints of our, of our funding partners, and I'm really happy to tell you that over the last 15 years, we really haven't had a substantial increase in our budget. We did in 2000, and that was to fund our, or at least to be able to replace our crumbling building on Portsmouth Avenue with, with the building that we have there now. So these are the budgets that run our organization. The one to which the municipalities contribute is the cost shared budgets, but there are several other budgets that are 100% funded by different ministries, by various grants I'll tell you about, and then there are cost recovery programs as well. So the cost shared budget for 2015 is a total of $15.6 million. That's broken down into two components, the municipal contributions, and that's the $5.6 million for all three municipalities, the city and the two upper-tier counties. And then there's, as I mentioned before, substantial contribution of almost $10 million from the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care. They call it a grant. We hope that it's very solid, because it is really hugely important to the fundamental running of our organization. I apologize that this is so small. Our financial person is away, so I just had to borrow something that she had, and I'm not as good at technical things as some other people. But the top part just shows you what I just showed you about the, the breakdown of the $15.6 million, but at the bottom, you can see that the share amongst the municipalities is based on the municipal role. So that was the agreement amongst the municipalities, it has been ever since I've been here, and that's still the case. So as you can see, Kingston pays 65.95% of the municipal contribution because of that's its share of the population. And so for 2015, that amount comes out to $3,713,000 and change. That's a 2.04% increase over 2014, or about $84,000. The other budgets, just very briefly, that we have, we have funding from the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care to run the tobacco programs, to run a low-income dental program for children, which will be changing, some of you may be aware, this year, to augment our communicable disease control through infection control, and from the Ministry of Children and Youth Services for the Healthy Babies, Healthy Children Visiting Program, to provide preschool speech and language for children in this area, and to do screening both for infant hearing and for low vision. In addition, we have cost recovery programs. We have contracts with, I think it's eight of the nine municipalities, for Part Eight of the Building Code Act, and this is a cost recovery program. People who make applications for sewage systems, whatever service they're looking for, they are charged a fee on a cost recovery basis. And our travel clinic, in which we provide advice and information, and vaccines and medication for people traveling to parts of the world that have communicable diseases that we don't have in this area, as this is also a cost recovery program. Finally, there's miscellaneous revenue, all 100% funded. So Public Health Ontario provides some money for a regional library services for Eastern Ontario for public health. We have a couple of projects with the Public Health Agency of Canada, and a number of research projects that Dr. Kieran Moore, our Director of Research and Education, has brought in on a research grant proposal basis. So in summary, the total of budget for our organization is just over $22 million. That's broken down, as I mentioned before. The total municipal contribution to this total budget is just over 25%. That's all I really have to tell you, and I'm very happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I'm also remiss in not recognizing Lishel, Counsel Lishel, who is a retired member of the Board of Health. We thank her for her contributions to it. Thank you, your worship.
That's great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Oh, Counsel Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. Dr. Gemmell, what did you say about the children dental program, that that was changing?
Yes, what's happened, your worship, what's happened, it was announced in December 2013, is that all of the programs for dental care for children, including ones that are run by the city through its social services department, are going to be amalgamated into one province-wide program run by somebody, a large organization, I presume, the RFP is out, actually, it's, it's finished, and they'll be selecting a service provider to do the assessments and the payments for this. So we will be retreating a little bit from dental programs. We'll still be doing screening, we'll still be doing education, we'll hope to be doing some clinical prevention, but the emergency care that was provided previously, through a program called Children in Need of Treatment, for kids who had real dental emergencies up to age 17, and the preventive program that's been in place for about five years now called Healthy Smiles Ontario, all that will be subsumed into this larger program run on a provincial-wide basis. It'll still be there. We are working as hard as we can to ensure that the Government of Ontario ensures that all children currently covered, at least all children currently covered, continue to be covered. That remains to be seen. But, you know, the, the programs, some of the programs that you are also going to be affected by this.
Thank you.
Thank you very kindly, your worship. Thanks for hanging in, everybody.
All right. So given that it's 9:42, I think we'll, we've covered enough material for one evening. So just to recap for council, so the plan for tomorrow night, we will go back to departmental presentations C and D, so corporate and strategic initiatives, and then finance, technology, administration, and at that point, then we will move to deliberations. Okay, so just, just to go back to Counsel Hudson's question, so when we move to deliberations, we'll put the budget on the floor, and then we'll give a chance for any amendments, if people want to, to make any changes. However, must be submitted in writing. Please, if you have something, or even you think you have something, please submit it to the clerk so we can put it up on the screen, especially for the budget, it's very important that everybody understands exactly what it is that's being proposed. Okay? So with that, I will ask for a motion to recess. Move by Counsel Bohm, second by Counsel Turner. And that carries, we'll see you tomorrow.